Alright, there's uh, the study session for July seventeenth. Uh, can we have the call off please? Council member Whitmer?
Here.
Loia? Absent.
How's it coming?
Members?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Okay, so, do you have any public comments for items that are on the agenda? Seeing none of those public comments, um, if you're bored out of the whole session, I guess we'll have a floor to give that. Mayor, the council that made the whole session important.
Thank you.
Because that's, this is a closed session, that other one. Sorry, sorry. Okay, so item number three is review and discuss and provide staff direction. Letter of interest from the L C leaders.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, this item is review, discussion, provide direction to staff on seven eleven. The clean energy received in terms of practical assistance based on a $10,000 grant to help the town develop. Building individual life community here to present a brief report to the council. Mayor, members of council. So the study session, item number three on the agenda is to receive direction from city council regarding the letter intended from an insulated clean energy that's attached to a staff report. This letter intended is to receive assistance with the reach codes and receive a $10,000 support grant. So every three years, cities and counties across the state can adopt local reach codes in line with the building, through building code standards or Title twenty-four California code regulations. Cities and counties may adopt building codes more advanced than those required by the state, which are known as the reach codes. In addition to the $10,000 support grant, Coninsula Clean Energy will provide additional technical support such as model codes, consultation on technical aspects, adoption and implementation tools. They will also have members of the Coninsula custom, excuse me, Coninsula Clean Energy team sit down with us to walk through the details, participate at the city council meetings and provide implementation and adoption support along with any other support that may be needed. So, that said, I'm going to leave now, answer any questions you might have, concerns, the direction.
Do we have any questions, or staff? So, as I read the staff report, I think you've heard. The building industry obviously hasn't even adjusted to the two thousand and one January requirements yet. And so, I really didn't get a gist of what the reach codes actually were, edit in, um, codes that are extended beyond the requirements of Title twenty-four and the building code, etc.
So, follow me around here.
Please go.
No, just, so what are they, if any?
So the reach codes with Coninsula Clean Energy, Solar County Volant Clean Energy and Office of Sustainability of San Diego County, working together on these reach codes, actually to provide full electrification of buildings. Pretty much eliminate the gas, natural gas or propane gas that could be used. Uh, so that's, that's what their intent is going forward. Um, with these new, the new type of twenty nineteen California energy standards, the California code is one of the most stringent codes in the nation. So, the single family homes built under the new twenty nineteen energy standards, will use about seven percent less energy than the twenty sixteen energy standards for the new codes coming up. And they're also got the mandated solar PV system requirement that's going to be in this twenty nineteen. And so if you add that back within, then homes built under the twenty nineteen energy standard, it was estimated fifty-three percent less energy than those built under the twenty sixteen standards, which is trying to get to the net zero. But electrification, that, that's pretty much what they built, uh, is, is the greenhouse gas emissions that they're trying to eliminate.
So, if we adopt these reach codes, um, that would, the overall what is coming from the state, the county, and, um, you demanding this to our residents?
Yeah, it would, it would actually go into the ordinance, so it would, but it, it all depends because also the reach codes, it's enhanced their main things get rid of greenhouse gas emissions going all electric. Now, they can, there is, I think San Diego County is one of the mixed fuel buildings, um, which then they would require anywhere where there's a gas appliance, then you put a electrical two forty volt, thirty ampere ampere, fifty ampere, so you have water, your cooktop, um, clothes dryer. So that's one, one way of doing it, so they wouldn't add those specific requirements which aren't required by the twenty nineteen California energy codes.
Do you have to change out your work permit to pass it?
If that's the problem, yeah, yeah, that's, that's, I think that's the direction they're trying to go. For new construction.
We're going to go from new construction or remodeling the kitchen.
It's a trigger, so, so I guess.
It's kind of self-serving that D C D is asking us to do this because the electric company, the majority of the people, and secondly, very disgusting this council meeting, that, that, you know, mandating boards annual solar panels could, could be a slippery slope because now suddenly we're going to have to modify and manage neighbors that are then complaining that they spent twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars putting in solar panels, but their neighbor's trees have grown up too high and now they're casting shadows and they're going to have to save the electricity. I think encouraging is one thing, offering incentive is another thing, and, but mandating is, is kind of reached too far and it's a reach that personally I'm not interested in going forward with.
Excuse me, yeah, the mandate of the solar ready requirements is actually under the twenty nineteen energy codes. That's not going above and beyond of the energy code. And the way I'm reading it, the energy code ain't out yet, so it's already in the draft. And this is going, when I read the single family residences, so they're talking about residences that are located in subdivisions with ten or more housing being built. It's pretty much to be solar ready.
You, you don't have subdivision?
No, we don't.
We don't, right.
How would that affect them?
And I have, uh, let me see here.
Well, Mike, I suppose with that, it's a great question, how, since we don't have solar, so any, any subdivisions being built here, how would this affect that?
There is no subdivision, we don't have subdivisions, yeah. I mean, if you, you could look at it as somebody took a parcel of land and subterrated it, put two residents on it, like, you know, nobody's planning anything, then I can look at it, that's the solar, that's the solar mandate.
This obviously covers far more than solar. Because in essence, reach codes are going to trickle into a whole lot of other.
Reach, right, I mean, they're, yeah. You know, and the energy codes, like I said, in the efficiency, they're, they're actually got, um, so yeah, so as far as the, uh, energy goes, so they're actually, they, they put more restriction on insulation added to their R T R boundary in the walls, um, higher efficiency windows, this is going to be required, these are, these are, these are coming up, yeah. And they are going to require putting a one twenty, twenty ampere circuit out of water here for the heat, which sort of, not watering up, but that's, that's one of their, they added, they need to warrant it. Already, since last code, the twenty sixteen, they're, they're already required to put a, um, E V level one, ready to charge, you know, just ready to go in their garage. So it's, it's pretty, you know, like I said, our codes are pretty stringent. They're going to require a Q two inspection, third-party inspection on all installation now, instead of you just receiving a certificate. So, as I said, the hard codes are, are pretty, pretty restricted as it is.
Do you have a, I know, I, I don't think that you have an opportunity to bring this down, we have, uh, contractors around table.
We have one coming up in August.
So, they have had an opportunity to chime in, but they peeled out reach codes. We can find out, tell them, you know?
Any other, any public comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll find a direction to the staff.
I guess my basic feeling is that, um, I have a complete list of what the Coninsula Clean Energy reach codes are that are going beyond, what is anticipated by the state, uh, going to do for twenty nineteen. Um, that effectively would be incorporated into our building code as a mandated, um, building requirement for our residents. That's over the top of the state is, I think philosophically in the past, our council has been opposed to that because we want to encourage and ties, uh, but not mandate our residents to do things that, you know, uh, may be better environmentally and I, I'm sorry I'm saying that because, I, I think that we should do everything we can environmentally, but I think, um, philosophically, unless our council has made a philosophical, philosophical change, uh, I don't mandate, uh, so I don't have those lists to feel, uh, apples to oranges here. But, I guess, I, uh, agreed to this, that, uh, we are not required, as I mentioned here, it does not commit the town to adopt the code.
That's, that's correct.
And so I guess going forward, if this would be an exercise, then there's no cost to us. So there's no cost to us, we go forward, get the information, and then have a chance to come back and analyze it and make our decisions on it.
I look at it a little differently, but I, I, I'm along the same lines. Um, we have followed the state mandates related to large extension, and we have actually had a curve, and then all of a sudden the state said, I say, by the way, we're going to offer incentives for all this water, we don't give credit where things we've done, so we implement moves in advance to state, state doesn't do it for a couple of years. And I look at just the, the technology component that's attached to this as a constant change in environment. And I know that our residents are going to bear the burden of the additional costs of doing the restrictions as of two thousand twenty. And I still think the reach codes, I don't like terminology for reach codes. Codes are codes for reason, and then reaching beyond that is a whole other reason. We haven't even gotten a feeling from our general contractor, because our building industry, or our residents, because not all of our residents' name will be in a certain philosophy, or they believe a certain thing to be cheaper, they don't think that about. So my problem is, we don't even know the effect of the requirements that are coming into play. I mean, I would be open to seeing where the construction industry, which is a huge part of that, and seeing how they feel, you know, related to this. So I'd love to hear in front of your roundtable, um, give feedback and that. But I, even though the philosophy, I don't like to take money for a grant in bad faith, because this, this is implying that, you know, we're moving forward in this philosophy of imposing additional restrictions on the construction industry, and we don't even know how those existing restrictions are going to impact this. So, um, you know, I would like that, those are just not emotions versus jumping into a grant to look into reach codes. I, I think I'm philosophically, I'm very, uh, but for me, by the way, I, there's no term reach code that does, probably the wrong way, I don't know what it is, it's silly, but I, but I, I'm more inclined to think $10,000 is not enough. And as I read the documents, the deals, like, what they're buying with $10,000, it's a really, it's a, you know, all these serious places, it's an accomplishment. And I'm not going to be as tempted to say that's not necessary, because I actually, I think not as boring as, I guess, at least, not as today as before. I guess, look, they're all agreeing, so it's kind of a little strange now.
Yeah, and my comments are that when I first read this, um, and my first question would be, what are all these that they're giving proposals? And, you know, I can understand why P C D, P C D wants to propose, um, but, you know, we have a lot of trees here requiring certain things, you know, just like with solar energy, requiring solar energy as we discussed at council maybe a while ago, um, you know, that has undependable consequences that would make the cost. Then developers have the right to take down trees to make sure that, that solar insulation, that's just an example. They weren't very specific, they just said that they want to do reach codes and, and this, I think all of my colleagues have said we're not interested. You know, it's kind of carte blanche, and, you know, it's very, well, taking the money kind of implies we're with them, and, uh, so I'm not interested in it.
Unfortunately, our vice mayor, Mr. Loia, is not here, uh, he's on his way, but he is aboard the P C D, so he may have entirely his skin on him. Unfortunately, he doesn't have the opportunity to convince us, so, do you need to talk about something?
I know, the direction provides that, and so, yes. I know the direction summarizes at this point we're not here to, or, or the letter intended.
Is it time sensitive?
Uh, yeah.
At the bottom.
At the bottom, February first, and, and the builder's force does not build it. And we would really be, you know, hard left carte blanche conversation is, necessarily now you just have K is going to help, help us put together what those codes actually would look like, those details that we would need, have a pretty interesting conversation with the builders and the public.
I see.
To find out whether they're supported.
Unless there's an understanding broadly what they mean by reach codes, it feels like they're going to determine more, but they know what they're saying. But definitely our all other townspeople would, have this, I would assume that Coninsula Clean Energy probably has a, which is a list of all the things that they can do to all of them. So it's just amazing how we don't have that specific picture.
But, but George, what you just said is giving too much information, the $10,000 can help us develop specific codes. Yeah, we would think would be over the top of the state is sending a mandate on John, see?
Within the framework of what they determine their reach codes.
Okay, but that again, those events are basically philosophy, not mandating, over the top of state mandates, things that are to our residents to do. Uh, we don't have, we have our golden codes, that set acts and things like that, but we don't mandate, you know, credit the business unless it's handed in.
Not if the D C D wants to answer that.
And so, I think, yeah, the direction.
I think that's a good direction. So, let's move on to the item number four, which is receive and discuss, provide some additional feedback on the townwide traffic flows, planning document that we reviewed a month ago. Uh, and George's direction was that while there is five hundred and some odd pages of data, not to dissect all that data directly, but to provide some direction on some overarching decisions, and so Robert and, uh, George will give us some.
And if I could, before you, just to check with Mr. Martin, um, there's a specific thing here that affects cigarette school and property then. I have a daughter that attends a school, I don't think that should have any impact on this, it's only a factor.
Or you later on. It has to be a financial, financial consideration, so that you're totally, you're fine.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, um, Marty, there's actually, before you did this presentation, we have rooted here in T J Cam, there was some action we'd like to have the council, we had, uh, actually, we had an agreement with T J Cam. The original contract and scope did not include having two council presentations in one April, and this additional one's worth, or massive, for thirty-three thousand, five per dollar contract commitment. The council would approve that, so we see advantages, so we can carry the next year ahead.
Does anybody have any questions for Marty on that? Any public comments on that? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Mayor, so, you know, um, we're going to here, I guess, get, what we have here is the same presentation, April seventeenth, as you mentioned, Bill, we were marked there. There's a lot of information that was presented, and we counselled that, that maybe it was time to digest and look at this more. So then, you ask us to come back to this meeting to add that presentation, or, uh, if you're interested in the mayor and council, how much of this presentation you want to hear again? Or you want to focus on certain areas? At the end of the, at the end of the period of presentation, what the staff would like to get is, what's the philosophy that the town wants to have, move to, deal with traffic? You want to try to live in it somehow with traffic call, calling devices, name of that, or do you want to try and let it go free group, or whatever? Uh, I saw where in between, and then give us direction, do you want to have a start meeting with the community, make notes, just start talking about these things? Maybe set up R F E, get a consultant on board, and that sort of that, so those are all the things that we're looking for in the question.
Alright.
So, um, who do you want to kick it off, and again, there's a lot of slides here, so if you wanted to skip through these or focus on certain topics, that's private of the council.
Lots of that kind of conversation about that, of course. Mr. Mayor, what do you think about?
I think we've seen this, my, I've worked, yeah.
What's, I, I think there is.
Is there a reason?
There's the data, the backup data.
The fact.
So, yeah, so what, what is it that you'd like to focus if you have? I think that they, if I, if I, if I could, and other council members, but I, I do believe that even at the last session, you know, we reviewed the staff report, and the staff report said that the transportation committee was focused on to, to work with the traffic issue in town is to get the traffic to the town faster, and so what's my way to have the level of service be at the highest possible level, put in, you know, devices that would keep traffic moving, such as roundabouts and others. And, um, and the council's discussion at that time was, you know, a lot of our cut through traffic is a problem for the town. Um, and I think with Larry Dahl and, and George, where it was, it was created, the council would give formal direction. That's what we want to do, and if we want to slow down the traffic or get the traffic diverted and not do all this cut through traffic, then there are certain measures that we would have to take to get ways to stop directing people through here and to deter people from going here and moving on to where they're really going, that's what's, that's really what I'm asked. I, I, so, um, and I think that's more or less where we're early about, was, oh, there was interest in everything that. So, I don't know, it was the council, council, I think.
Okay, before you dive, it's like, we were getting something from the transportation committee here, yet, yeah, there's a lot of weird talk there. Where is, is that?
No, it's, uh.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'd like to, I'd like to see this. You know, I, I think that the basic, um, concept of your, uh, deterrent traffic is, is a certain jurisdiction is, is kind of a philosophy, because you have to know, are we supporting that component, or are we promoting that component of moving traffic faster? I think those are the two basic philosophies before we figure out, um, a direction in the, I mean, I, I thank you, I've read the entire thing, I've heard in certain stats, but. But that being said, one of the things that comes up very clear in here, there's a very large number of people that drive through this town daily. And, and as a question, I would kind of like to know that in this sequel component, because I know one of our questions has always been, how can we attach ourselves to these other projects and, you know, that are building all these things that, you know, is promoting this traffic? And getting some form of potential compensation on our side so that we can put that into our traffic programs and so on and so forth? Is the philosophy of, uh, uh, deterring traffic going through town, is that something that can help us? Because, I mean, I'm going to use Alameda as an example, we have eighty-nine percent estimated capture of traffic, which is the largest number in all of the studies, um, which I found amazing, eighty-nine percent of traffic is coming through town. Uh, but I'd like to know if how can we use that number or any of those other numbers, maybe medical, P C R, etc., as leverage to, uh, all the sequel responses that we have? So, on that, just, George, you, I think what, at one point you and I had a conversation, you told me was, you, you believe in this town, but not succeed on something that, I think we as a council are trying to do, which is, you know, get integrated with mental parks planning, river and city's planning, so that we understand when they're maybe putting a large project on, although that will affect us to have some input into it. Um, I think what you said, of course, you know, basically, we're not going to get there, we're not, we have no pathway, is that correct?
Well, we are in that process, and we provide that feedback, or from planning and from the, here inside of the house and from the works, but it's too little. Uh, and even if there were mitigation measures that were suggested within mental parks development, it doesn't seem they're obligated to actually do that. Uh, and if we were to get funding for example to, uh, impact or, or mitigate traffic on the marsh road and field field and solution, you know, our supply and marsh road, they handed us a $20,000 supply and marsh road, would we even want to do that? So, I mean, there's those things that, that have to cross, that was conversation.
But then also, George, you've had a situation where we have asked for something like the Green Heart project, and either the developer nor the city have a park, uh, who were forthcoming, and even though we did put down mitigation measures, and we did isolate or identify our, for.
And we have to admit, those, that developer and the city have a park, and they say, we're giving our money to the city, what would they do with it?
We never played that, even more, I have money, but I was troubled by sounds, the, the developer's very transparent with us, he said, look, you have nothing to do with one of those things. Uh, and the city mental park was transparent, I think what they says, we're required by lots of this money in mental park, we can't give to you that, which left us just completely on the outside of that.
I don't think the IR setting will, it happens at all.
The IR settings, they, they talked about lots of impacts on that, right, and, I mean, thanks for your, to, and, and of course, why we most properly see, see what the rest of the traffic is getting them out. So are we just wasting our time, staff time, and money trying to chase them that was there?
Well, I, I think our attorney, if we wanted to pursue it and stop programs, uh, we would have had to gone to every meeting, we would have had to continue to object and, and build a case so that we could actually then go have the project stopped before moving forwards or to end of the road we put on with the Facebook expansion. But the Green Heart project, we didn't do that, and with any other project, you know, we don't, we don't send someone to go there to one of the meetings and to object, you know, have time for doing that.
So, can I ask, since George mentioned the five hundred thousand, I'd like to know how much we're straight to what, but we'll go with that. And that being the philosophy, we're going to fix your, you know, we're going to promote the white and the road, and we're going to give money to that, but if our philosophy is that. But if our philosophy is the deterrent of traffic to cut through and we have some mitigating, you know, deterrent measures that we apply, which cost money and we have a ten-year plan of implementing those. In a sequel component, if our philosophy is a deterrent versus a promoting people to go through it, would the sequel then say, you know, compensation, mitigation component be, will contribute towards mitigating, you know, your traffic control devices to deter traffic? Is there, because that would be our philosophy. Because if they're asking us to widen road, then they're asking us to change our philosophy to move their stick and move their cars through our town. And therefore, they're telling us to change our philosophy to promote their development, and that's not the word looking for.
Sorry, I did just, uh, to, uh, what they consider is most of these developments are going to predominantly impact those through routes. Sure, lots of the past group. Perhaps, and one of the suggestions in here is looking at kind of the off streets. And perhaps the deterrent is to keep them off of the internal streets. And just like a pastoral, I mean, Alameda, for example, without driving down Appleton or Bellemus or one of those, they just keep them. I think that's something I'm actually, I mentioned, I'm, I'm interested in a combination of, I'm curious, they talk a lot about through, but, and they say that part of the reason we have so much, well, they consider cut through traffic, that cuts off the major streets into the neighborhoods, right? That's sort of the definition. And the idea is if you, um, discourage people from getting in the neighborhood streets or whatever, some mechanism disturb, discourage that, it only works if you actually have good traffic flow on the, the major streets through town. Uh, and that's, to me, an attractive package, you know, picture people pushing to the, the Alameda type streets that the, and those are arterials, right? I'm sure, Boulevard.
So they're going minor, uh, so that you need part of the philosophy that the council, that you wanna keep the main streets and middle field, LV is moving so that that's like not precise use, in a area where not precise you may look at other mitigation that you still have to prevent that. But you, because you're not gonna shut down the Alameda traffic, instead of coming through somehow. But if you keep the main streets still, then there's much lack of, of, of chances.
The two have to work together, you have to have exactly that philosophy. You have to have that philosophy because if not, all you're doing is stopping people on Alameda, they're going to take your site. It's like oil and water and the ground.
Well, that's what's happening.
Oh, yeah.
Stop sign, which is a bomb, and that's a very, uh, what he finds about, has been coming since twenty-ten. Um, but, uh, and that is, uh, an obvious solution that, uh, I call it east, I call it north sound. And Middlefield, I call it west sound. But what about the east-west, uh, my, Valproiso, and you've got.
Feroz.
Feroz, African, I know, and that is not a very efficient.
Yeah, it's a neighborhood, those are neighborhood streets.
But they, they call it an arterial. And so, and you have to remember, all the little traffic controlling devices that you put on any of these streets, your residents, you, me, everybody, residents are gonna have to navigate them also. And it could be, um, unpopular.
I, I think Alameda's really important, I, I think the town, we apparently clear north-south, even though it's not literally north-south. The north side, you know, between Alameda, um, ECR and Middlefield.
Those three are clearly, um.
East west is, is much tougher. Yeah, I mean, I just.
You've got Marsh Road.
Right.
And then.
That doesn't go through, right, so you've got Marsh Road, then you got Barrows, Hatton, Watkins, well, Watkins is, Watkins is gets a lot of, a lot of Marsh Road traffic.
Watkins got an enormous amount of, um, well, no, their increase from two point fifteen is only about, uh, three hundred ninety-six cars. A lot of the, I'm looking at, anyway, there's.
But I think that's, that's a really interesting, I don't know which streets we would along, that are coming along with traffic.
East west. And Klayon, figure fifteen, I'm sorry.
Or page.
Uh, it is, I ordered that. There's a diagram, I think we do have a street map condition as well. That kind of shows some of these major, um, streets, and I think there's two, uh, on the east side of the local, uh, two main roads that are not, what is Marsh, is that what you're saying? And so those go through there to Bay. Uh, and then you have between Middlefield and El Camino. The two main, only eight average streets are Watkins and Barrows. Then we have a few streets that are shared with Meadow Park, um, the El Camino side being Meadow Park, the middle side being in Aberdeen. And then between El Camino and Alameda, there's only three straight line streets. One being shared with, um, Meadow Park that we love rising and sharing with many. And then you have, uh, Aberdeen Avenue and stuff, those are the streets that go straight through.
So, for me, this, I'm sorry, first is maybe we can go through that, that's streets, I'm not sure that's the.
No, no, it's, you're talking about whether the.
I got you, I got you, that's the perfect use of this council step, what, what's the best, what are you looking for, what's most helpful for us?
Can I just, I, yes, ma'am, if you look at Barrows, Barrows does not look like that. Barrows is not a straight street. That is not, Barrows does not look like that, it is very curvy, it's, oh, it's, it's got a curve. Not really, so it looks like, oh, that's a no-brainer, that's an arterial, but I'm just saying, got a, well, deal conditions.
So might I assume that we're looking for a basic philosophy of the town? And I think, in my opinion, is you've got a combination of those philosophies of deterrent, the keeping more of the traffic off the, you know, curbs and dealing with traffic mitigation devices at locations that we have not to turn.
I agree with that, my only concern is that we got a report from us that labels streets with words like arterial, like, or. And I don't wanna use those to just do, those shouldn't be our guides to world with traffic sweeping. You know, I think we know which streets are, are the ones we want to protect, the neighborhood streets. And they may or may not be consistent with the label over here. So if you use the word arterial, I don't think it's the same as this definition.
Right.
Well, I think that our major goal is to keep the cut through traffic on the three major boulevards slash. Roadways, what, Middlefield, El Camino, and the Alameda. Alright.
That's north south.
And on the east-west, you know, I think that we have to be sensitive that we have a lot of residents live there in their neighborhood streets. So, you know, I mean, you can say, well, east west, well, but if they're cutting through, they're cutting through to get somewhere so that they can go through different arterial, and that we wanna make that a little more painful. By having no left turns or having stop signs at certain intersections that slow things down. And I think that that way they'll stay on whatever they're on, you know, because you never know. You know, Waze is always gonna try and cut them in and all. And until we have signs or something, you know, a no left turn, then Waze will take it out of their, their, uh, algorithm. And we won't, they won't be telling them to turn left for us when we have a sign that says no left turn. So I think that we need to, most of the traffic is going east and west, or excuse me, north and south. Uh, in, you know, Redwood City and Meadow Park, and I think that if you're, if you're, unless you're a local resident, then, then stay on those arterials and that will help me cut through the traffic. Yeah, I know, there are ways that we can, we can help address that with no left turns, with, with putting stop signs, you know, at the, at the different intersections on those, on those cut through paths. Or, or fire a district or from speed hoppers, so that's, I mean, but that's a very complex issue for us going east-west.
I'll think of an example, I used to live on Wallen. Um, I can see us as a town saying, you know what, Watkins is sort of a continuation, we should be encouraging traveling on Watkins. Um, and if we went to that, we'll say, alright, no left on Wallen, that's the next street over from Wallen. So, you know, they say, no left on Wallen, maybe no left on Maple, right? All of a sudden, people would stay on Watkins. Or alternatively, we could say nothing, in which case what happens is people get to the top of a road track, they look up and they see a backup at Watkins ECR, they turn right and either go to Wallen or Maple. Those are, I mean, they're very different philosophies, right? Do we wanna say, I don't, and that's one example of some of the things I call block through town. We wanna try to encourage it on the, you know, Barrows and keep it off of whatever the alternatives are there, we wanna encourage it on Watkins, encourage it, you know.
Well, my one of the things we could do is run some experiments by, you know, selecting over the next year or so, run some experiments because we have the data now and see whether or not, and then do a traffic analysis, whether or not it makes a difference.
I also think residents are gonna care a lot about lots. There's a massive community, I'll reach on this one, yeah.
We have to help the public.
So the public outreach and the pilot type projects are really focused on the twice.
Yes.
Type of traffic, because north-south, we want to identify ECR, Middlefield.
I'm not sure, anytime that, I was, I was, the, the neighborhood stuff, north-south. For example, you have people come to us and complain because they're already didn't get backed up, therefore they're going, those are parallel. They're actually obviously decided, no, you can say no left turns, I'm certain, I don't know, whatever you might put in.
And then the other, the other one, I was, Robert, Marty, and these streets are truck routes, they're designated for, Barrows, they're designated for.
All the trains.
That's after the avenue, Barrows, Middlefield, and two, there, what is it, three, that's the truck route.
Greenhalls.
It's not, uh, it's surprising, I, I don't have.
Greenhalls, Greenhalls, not Greenhalls.
It's not a truck route, it says, it says, seven, I'm thinking, no, I have, I have, it's, it's, well, the truck, I don't know.
Well, I know, I don't, I don't put the sign on the, on the, it's real present.
Oh, great.
It's hard to do there. Yeah, I know, it's not.
So on those particular streets that are designated truck route, and they're, they're, you may not wanna put, you know.
Sure.
A lot of things that cause trucks, that's annoying for people, owners of people, right, elders, it's not. That breaks things like that, okay. Oh, that's what I'm, I'm sure.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm obviously, unless you're in section and Alameda is the T, but one of the problems that we have with the Alameda component is the intersection of Woodside Road and Alameda, because that's state controlled highway, and you're not gonna adjust the east-west direction to mitigate the flow this way. So there's always one you can contact, uh, backup, no matter what we do, is the flow goes until it just stops and backs up on its own. So those are all things as we move forward, we're gonna have to, you know, pay close attention to, because I know that after that, it's gotten a spike of additional traffic, um, because that's how we're coming around, because they stay on Woodside Road. My concern is with all this, all the traffic, we're not forcing the, forcing the cars on the Woodside Road. We're taking all of our private, you know, our residential students, we're paying for the cost of hearing those roadways up, while all the state highway, ECR, all, it's not really a good look at, but. It's usually a shit, sick holes, and, you know. Yeah, so.
Well, once you get into, uh, it's just bad.
I'm also a residential.
I wouldn't.
Middlefield's okay. Well, I used to eat chicken. I thought you were looking for. So I don't. It's all progress. Yeah, there's actually.
We have direction on the philosophy, I think, there's, yeah, there's a philosophy, but there is a lot of data. Uh, and there was a UAA on how, you know, how, they had to read that, they, they, they told us that, that looking at those tables and looking at that, that's, it's.
I, I would say just a comment on that, I think it said it's very disappointing because there's a lot of traffic. So that's a higher level discussion of how we mitigate the cut through traffic and how we control it. At this point, I didn't get really an answer, but I think the philosophy is, no matter what we respond to the sequel, we're not really getting out it, which is very disappointing as a jurisdiction that seems to always be writing letters to sequel, so. I defer exit, it's a charity, that's actually really.
Sequel is very complicated, you have to project, you have to project in saying, um, on this road situation citywide is probably not a project. You have to be more specific than that. Um, but if you came down to implementing traffic control devices, then it will be certainly a sequel we're looking at, whether or not it complies with the general plan, circulation element, and whether or not the, whatever's being proposed will create any potential significant impacts, which could be noise, reverberant traffic, other devices, things like that. But until we have a project, it's too soon to figure that out.
Okay, the bigger question was, perhaps how, is there any way to comment out bigger impact on progress and other things?
Um, well, their, their sequel has identified a number of times significant impacts and how it can be. They like, they don't have to do anything, I don't think that's the state of the law, I think we can probably go back to what you said. But if it has to be resolved, start suing major cities, um, then, you know, there's a major precedent because of what we're upcoming, so. But I mean, we got, we got the, 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 the issue there, we, we went to Dr. Till and said, no, you're wrong, and we're gonna hurt people wrong. And then they, they all came to the table and we were able to work things out, but, um, that's still, that's something that's out there.
We have a letter from our president that's specifically focusing on Alameda. Any discussion of that?
Well, that's true. It can all be viewed as that person's particular old opinion, not the committee, but what he says, I wasn't the committee, they heard this, I didn't hear any evidence, that doesn't count. But, um, just his opinion.
Oh, yeah, you have a.
He is one. Yeah.
So, I, well, I guess maybe we should have a specific arterial here, right? That seems to be kind of, um, creating a lot of things in the community with backup. And, you know, should we focus on trying to make the, uh, Alameda also focus, put through more traffic smoothly, more smoothly, so that there's not the backup that starts with the, or, uh, stop signs?
Mayor, I believe it is the sense of the traffic, the transition, yes, that should be, uh, there's been a lot of conversation about that. What is that? And there's been no, we're not, how to solve that. There's been a goal there that yes, we should be improving through there. Um, there's a split that we're shooting about whether secondary element, which is, do we do as we discussed today, which is discourage people going through the, you know, what I'll call neighborhood side streets. But there's, either way, we gotta make.
So chicken and egg, don't you think, it's the proof of, of war we start trying to deter that.
So, I, I will say, in, in agreements with what is said in this report, it says that there is some philosophy of either a traffic control device on Alameda in some location, um, I think that the discussion already throughout that is probably cost prohibitive in some sense. But I do think the philosophy of moving traffic safely for a duration of a period of time. But as you look at the numbers, that period of time is pretty much damn all, all day. And it's all day, all the way up until night, so you can pretty much. But as you look at the numbers, that period of time is pretty much damn all, all day, and it's all day, all the way up until night, so you're pretty much just saying, do we want people to blow through? You know, and I think that we have, if there was a traffic control device, a light of some sort, we can control some timing, maybe we want to deter or control the amount of volume. Because if it's a roundabout, I'm just going to use a roundabout as a simple example, you're going to have a constant flow, and once that flow gets used to a roundabout, it would be a faster flow, and then when you have the volume, you have more volume, people come to that volume and says, hey, the dice is open now, we can control. But with a light, we can kind of have some semblance of control in saying, if we determine that this is going to be the blow through roundabout waiting, we can then set a limit, utilize the lighting features to deter the volume of traffic versus a roundabout, the volume that doesn't really control on.
I just, um, I hear what you're saying, but I'm not quite convinced that, uh, the roundabout will produce what you're projecting it will produce, and that.
And I want to make this easier, Mr. Mayor, the overarching consideration that you talked about a little bit, is all this talking agenda, talking about any specific project or type of control, way of life on this agenda. Well, one of the, one of the thoughts that we're studying, and you could certainly say we should study this or look at it, but getting into the specifics, especially at one intersection, we.
That's what we're talking about, that's the only intersection that's really hard.
Because only one has been brought to your attention, but it gives a potential for other places to work.
I would say I agree with you, that just means, it needs to be discussed. On that, the other point you were raising, at least what I heard, is that we may not want to proceed with this, with the side streets stuff, until we solve the major thoroughfare stuff. And I know I'm very sloppy with my language, sorry, but, but, um, the, uh, I'm not sure we need to do that, today's all going to take so long. And once we, I, I think talking to residents about the side streets stuff is going to take a very long time. So, so I think we can't proceed.
Parallel.
Parallel, because I think Chris would actually want to.
I think I was talking about installation.
Yeah.
I love it, it's installed.
I think that's.
And, and the thing is now that, yeah. Alameda, there are ways to certainly get Alameda by going Stockbridge and then holding this and then selling it, you know.
This is all weird, it's just. And I think it's something we just have to look into. I do have a continued question I'd love to ask about, which is the historical data, it doesn't, it doesn't, just does not feel accurate to me at all. Because it shows, now, raise this last number, it's, I mean, generally, I've been all about it, generally, it shows less traffic in two thousand fifteen than in two thousand eighteen, and I find that really hard to believe. Do you have any reaction to that?
I, I don't, because as I said, I also, that, um, overall, throughout the area, I would say throughout the area, the traffic is tremendously wide. Not only that, you have all these new, uh, ways of, you know, deterring different streets. So before, as my experience, we used to see a five to ten percent difference in traffic on daily basis. But now with ways and Google and all that stuff giving you different directions, you know, you are seeing more percentage of difference in traffic that you, the data that you collect on day to day basis. So, if I collect the data today, and if I collect the data maybe, you know, two days later, then it is a percentage change. Along with that, there is also a growth in traffic around our area. So what is happening is that the congestion is happening somewhere outside, and not a lot of throughput is coming from there. So that's another reason why you see that, because of the congestion somewhere, your throughput, to your, uh, main arteries or veins kind of go down a little bit, and that's the reason you're seeing that percentage difference. There are a lot of things that are happening at the same time.
I, I hear you, I, my response is that it really undercuts my confidence when I see these numbers, because I live here, and I look at, for example, El Camino, which now has all kinds of new construction on it, it's happened the last three years, and it's just mind-blowing, the traffic would have increased there.
It could happen that, you know, your signal timings change, you are now giving a greater, larger time for pedestrians to cross, there are so many different factors, but we think that we could address this, is collect the data and see again.
Sure.
We definitely see some percentage change.
But I'd like to point out, going back to two thousand eighteen, and looking at the, normally, the public schools go take a vacation the week before Easter, and the Catholic schools take vacations starting Good Friday on. And you pick the week that is before Easter, so you have the Catholic schools and the private schools probably getting ready to go, because they are out of school on, on Friday, and some parents take their kids out earlier, so I think there's going to be more traffic. And while I can't guarantee, but traditionally, the, the public schools are, are similarly off or just getting back from vacation. And so, the, the period of time in which we selected to do the study, twenty seven, twenty eighteen, twenty, twenty eight, of March of two thousand eighteen, personally, I think was a bad time. You know, it's, 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 it's easy to say it in retrospect, okay? But, um, that may answer some of the questions and some of the thoughts that, that Council members has brought up, is that it is around the holiday time, and traffic volumes may not have been there at the same level as they would have been had you gone before or two weeks later. Just a point and observation.
But before the, I think this is, we did check the schedules and calendars, and the schools along.
I can tell you, that, that, if you go look at the attendance records of the schools, right, if you were right after Easter, the classes have substantial absences. And most of our traffic, daytime traffic, in the times you were looking, is school time traffic.
I think this is a fact, a philosophical point on that, we should probably specify, is the schools actually.
Yeah.
Now you bring it up, they are a major chunk of our, of our traffic, and I'm not sure what options we have to address them, but, um, we should probably talk about, you go right through those neighborhood streets, because they have to.
We talk, we talk them all shut, if your car has tried to, you know, carpooling, and, you know, standard things, but I have to tell you, living at the corner, if they lost the street, um, the summertime's the best because.
That's everywhere.
But, especially in schools. But, yeah, after this.
One, one, I mean, is there anything that we can discuss with regard to schools, that's helpful, do you want? Not really, we're already on our best.
Yeah, I think we're doing the best we can, at least, what works, everything possible.
Well, I got, focus on the north south, more improved here, identical with those priorities, would be mitigating back on side streets and return to council, the plans would engage the community to discuss those mitigation measures. Of those.
My question.
And the discussion on the, the north south, we then have a more detailed discussion. Because of the problem on Alameda, so.
There is, there is balance in this.
That would work very well, which is also a good work, so we're going to have.
Did you get what you heard?
Yes, the correct.
Okay, great, thank you, thanks.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Let's move to our straight session. No, you can start, we just can't start, I don't, sorry. Public here. All right, then, let's start the, uh, regular session, uh, let's start with the pledge of allegiance. For the United States of America, and neither republic, nor nation, under God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Peter Winter.
Here.
Councilmember Paul, you're this absence, so, councilmember members.
I'm still here.
Lewis.
Here.
Okay, presentations of, of the office. Commander, you just showed up on time.
Yes. Congratulations, she's just getting off of duty, so.
That's right.
All right, well, that can three minute break. Okay, we're reconvening. Okay, uh, back to the reg, regular agenda, uh, first item that we're, we already have the pledge, we already have the roll call, but we're still off here. And so, presentations, Joe Wade.
Right.
Commander. Commander.
Good evening, is that working? Oh, yes, the old arm, matters. All right, yeah. All right, we have the swearing in tonight, um, I feel really definitive, uh, right now that I get to work, you can't, you can see who's there, I can see who worked before month period, and it helps us make good choices on, on who we bring here, so I'm going to bring up, uh, Joe Green, come on up, Joe. Me and Joe Green, so I was like, I just saw me step. And you know what's funny, because we, we joked about this name, me and Joe Green, half of the part of this, know who we go free. So, Joe, wait, Joe was, uh, Joe was born and raised in San Fernando, where he currently still lives there with his wife, Cassandra. Joe and Cassandra had two children together, four-year-old daughter, Marlo, and a three-month-old, Little Logan, over there, he's early still. Before working in law enforcement, Joe worked in recreation field for thirteen years, running aquatic facilities for the Palmeri Recreation and Rehab Center for the city of South San Francisco. Joe graduated from San Francisco State University with a degree in criminal justice, and was part of South Bay training consortium class one forty-five. And Joe was off time, he enjoyed hunting, fishing, hiking, and camping, and Joe grew up playing multiple sports, baseball, football, wrestling, and golf. For the last ten years, Joe was involved in recreational high school, which is something to totally see out here in California, so, pretty cool. And now, we're at swear a minute, good review of the office, go ahead now, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I.
Just agree.
I just agree.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without mental reservation.
Uh, sorry, without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discard.
That I will well and faithfully discard.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I would ask. You know, it's funny, I can sit here and read this thing, and I try to break it up in a certain sense, and even follow along, so I want a couple, couple words to you on there.
So, any comments or more questions for Joe? Welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're not allowed.
I already did. Trigus, Trigus, I'm already on the ice. One, same tail, and we might have to stand with it.
What rate did you wrestle?
Uh, two fifteens is in the unlimited heavyweight, I was like, two twenty, you go against him, two seventy-five, so.
Oh.
Bill was hundred five, they were most competitive here, you know. Well, they amped it. Have we seen, oh, we know, Joe, we've seen both of them there, rest of the. But we want to. Joe.
Yeah, welcome.
Thanks, congratulations.
Okay, um, public comments. So, anybody wishing to make a comment about something not on the agenda, you will get a chance to have an opportunity to comment on things on the agenda if you go over those items. So, are there any public comments or items not on the agenda? If you're not, we'll close public comments, report out a closed session, George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to count the best closed session for performance evaluation, city attorney, I'll provide directions to the city manager, we go for a rec.
Okay. Item number six, city manager's written report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be counted, I have written a report for you this evening, during my one-on-one with councilmembers, there were a couple of questions, one on the backup grant, one on the Bay Town, Bay Harbor Town funding, and one on the Berkeley schools arrest. And then the other on attendance, uh, for the music in the park events, I answered those questions one-on-one, um, and that's your end for your questions. Questions for George.
Um, in your report, you talked about the signage for the new office location that, um, the town offices had do, and I had a encounter with a resident the other day, a councilmember of East.
Yeah.
And, uh, who was actually there at the office, and just saying, you know, we can't, I made a hard decision on finding you guys, and then another lady came up and said, where's, is this the police station? Where's the police station? So, I don't know if I'm going to take out a little banner, put it at the corner, or something, but somehow, um, I guess it's hard for people to just follow the, uh, little signs that we do have, uh.
Sure, the signs do look pretty, so, that'll take a while.
Yes, and I do like the little signs that you have on the trailers, those are very classy, thank you very much.
Yeah, just to add on to that, hoping, there are still the old signs out there, that that was part of the problem, she was following the chronics of the old signs as well, on Middlefield Road, so I'm still saying, they're still there, Middlefield Road, uh, after you make the left, the right-hand turn, there's still a police station library and, uh, City Hall that way, so, we've just got to figure how we're.
Very nice one.
Yeah, just, yeah, believe me, you know, one of the reports we do, a couple of questions, well, one is, is, is pretty simple, which was, there was essentially an agenda or minutes of the, of the transition. Which, I just have a link, that hasn't been practiced in the past, and I don't know what, if we're going to do that, but for what's worth, much more detail, we won't look at, and I thought.
Thank you, it's, it's actually the city manager's report, I kind of, I pulled the Friday email that I sent off to the council, I deleted, I pulled that forward, right before the council meeting, this, uh, without the, actually, without the, without the, you can pull some of those in for this report.
Yeah, I guess that's useful, and if there's other sort of significant committees that are not part of it, it'd be nice to read.
Well, I don't know, but, I mean, all the committees, when they put their minutes out, they should. Those were actually minutes, those were summaries, I do that for EDC, and I do that for, uh, other committees that send them, do you need more?
And then, like, my second is, is therefore I asked about it, is, um, what's going on with Maple and Watkins and ECR, is that mess?
Yeah.
Um, Cowwater's been out there over the last couple of days to replace a water service, they need to move off of, uh, the chain so that they can replace the hour, that they had a week that they defended. And so, uh, they, they were supposed to finish that main, uh, sorry, that. And so, uh, they're, they were supposed to finish that main, uh, sorry, that service level replacement today, and they'll be moving on to the, uh, position that are now, those are the form, and get that in the next couple of days. And they'll be checking to see if that's stepping the flow of water that's trying to get it to.
So what does that mean in terms of getting all the, getting Maple clear and getting free flow travel?
So the concern is, is that without identifying the underlying cause of this angle, that even if you backfilled it, you're in there, it would just happen. And so what they're trying to do is address the underlying, uh, sorry, I can't say that, so that when they're repaired, that's.
So what does that mean? Are you saying that if they properly identify this, they're gonna finish it up in a week or two, will be back to normal if they've identified the problem?
If they identify the problem, then this is it, Cow Water will be moving on to catch the hole, opening it up, um, backfilling, acting, and then restoring. If this is not the problem, it will go into some additional in writing.
But if it's a problem, you think you have a week, two weeks, three weeks?
It's been a couple of months already. It's been a couple of months, if this is the underlying problem, we'll be having to stop a week, after they've done the replacement, they'll be able to close out. If prohibited to, if this is a problem, Cow Water is committed to making it up.
A month or two. Or a month or two. A month or two, that's why.
That's, yeah.
A long time.
Any other question? Sorry. I'll move on to the consent calendar, uh, which is items eight through fifteen. Uh, does anybody have any items they would like to pull for discussion, to ask a question about, make a comment about?
I think every question. Well.
And fifteen.
Question?
Fifteen. Um, um, yeah, um, I have a couple of questions. You need to open the session.
Mike, is yours a comment or?
It's really just a question.
Okay. And I have a question slash comment for eleven. Do you have anything?
No.
Alright. Does anybody from the public wish to pull for further discussion and vote, uh, for items eight through fifteen? Seeing none, then, um, I comment on eleven, we'll just go through these sequentially, oh. Because mine is just a comment. Uh, on the sweep, streets sweeping. Um, in, when I looked at the streets and, and an understanding really from further discussions, uh, on litter abatement and things like that, that we have at SBWMA. Um, it would seem that, that we perhaps might want to expand this contract to have more sweeping, because we get credit for clean water and things like that, and I didn't know if we should consider amending this now. Uh, George, as you and I had discussed, and also it looked like the number of streets didn't cover all the streets, especially the arterial streets and the connector streets that didn't cover those. It, it seemed to cover Lloyd and Park and parts of Lindenwood, parts where they're not high-traffic areas.
Right, in terms of the amendments that we thought about last week, with our agreement that were there, this is more timely to do this, and we've got to go back and investigate where we want to be standing, and what streets that can qualify again with the contract, and that, at that point. Well, we, we need to get this one moving. Um, on the number of streets.
I can answer. Robert, I think. So, yeah, so basically what we have is, um, the entire, I was saying, we sweeping the entire town. So that's all the streets in town. The, uh, streets with curb and gutter get in essence additional sweeping, so they get done eight times a year, and the rest of the time gets done.
Well, when I, when I looked at the board, it said certain streets like Lloyd and Park, monthly it said, I remember, I had to go back to the board, and I didn't see any reference to these streets that we just talked about that are collector streets that have high volume.
Oh, like, how do you?
Like Ensmo, like Latins.
Well, as, as the council is interested in expanding the services, we certainly go back to, uh, the contract, we see what those costs will be. The pricing that we have is in essence continued service.
So we have the streets that are listed. Uh, like in any park, are monthly, and then down at the bottom, that table, remainder of the town streets, those are all, they're listed as, they're not listed out by street.
Well, as you, as you and I mentioned, you don't get the trash rates to be paid for additional sweeping, which will get us credits from wastewater. Or something like that, I think there'd be something we should have that in the future, but that's, I'm not gonna not go for it, but there's. Alright, so we had questions, Mike, um, twelve.
Yeah, I don't know if they can, can either, their views, I just wanna make sure I understand what they're doing here. What, what are our, what is our current policy with regards to body cameras and, and, what's the policy?
So the policy says that when you're gonna take any type of enforcement action, you shall, I know I make a trap, this, the trap and stop going out, doing a test, we stop at night, uh, anything where I have to take enforcement action, I have to do it.
And, and how long will we be keeping the video footage from that, under this contract?
Well, the video footage, if it gets heard, it's heard for a certain time, and it just depends, you know, anywhere from, from one year to two years to statute limitations depending on the crime, say if something is evidence, um, depending on that statute of limitations, we may have to keep it as evidence for, for that length.
When with thirty, um, new cameras, how many cameras total do we have?
Thirty. No, we'll, we'll have, but we're requiring thirty, we'll get thirty.
How do you mean, you'll put any existing camera footage straight without the?
So, no, and there's why, so the same camera potentially happened in my pocket.
Because we don't be holding.
Correct.
Is that what's supposed to look like?
It's mandatory.
When you were, uh, did not.
So. Repeat that one again, I'm sorry.
Well, what do you know, the old cameras.
Oh, fine, so the old cameras, so, so, uh, Axon purchased this camera called V. So in essence, what we're doing, having talked to their sales folks, they're non-serving these, there are none in stock, I've actually received emails from, one email from another chief of police in another state saying, hey, these are going out of stock, we need, we need ten of them, does anybody have any? And, uh, so basically, you can't send them in for repair, so they're obsolete, and, uh, that's the way that Axon wants to be, that's why they're locked them out, this is their competition.
And they're obsolete more because of the software that they use to download it to save it, and it is because anything that's the image, that's the rest of the packages, goes with it.
Which, which I should also mention for clarification, that's also one of the things that went with, uh, with this company, was because what the, what the district attorney is trying to do is to get everything paperless, or paperless, instead of walking up a, say, a, a CD or, or data stick with video evidence, we can actually upload it to the cloud, and they have access to that, up to the other sensitive agencies.
So, I'm gonna be ready to. I'd like a deeper understanding of how this process works.
I mean, you know, the ring bigger system, why it's gave us a little.
Sure.
And Axon is one of the main providers of all cameras and all of these devices.
Correct.
It's the biggest.
So, Mike, just a, a clarification, so are you, are you ready to, to vote on this?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to. You did that back.
Okay, this is fifth number fifteen.
So I, but after motorcycles, um, how many officers do we have that are, uh, motorcycle trained?
Technically speaking, right now, I believe we have four, because we do have one that's not riding motors now, she was going to train, uh, a while back. And then we have, uh, we have a current motor officer, we have one officer who's also a reserve DJ, uh, who rides a bike. At the time, and then we have a new officer who is training to go to the, uh, basic officer motor training course in October.
So are they each assigned?
Yeah, so we'll, so we'll have three, and then if somebody leaves, we will have a spare. The original plan was, uh, as, as the way life goes, we're going to keep the, the newest of BMWs until the engine and transmission blew, but it's so old, the recommendation was not to spend the twelve, fifteen thousand dollars to repair, the bike, give it third, that was due.
Are these new, um, owners, um? Or?
Well, uh.
Because there was a.
They're a lot quieter than our days.
I just can't. I don't have, just, anyway, I just know that there are motorcycle that drive and go up and down our streets all the time, and they love to.
You know, I can see this, it makes a distinctive sound, but it's not like the sound you're hearing from some of the street bikes, that get pretty wound up and create a high volume, that, that you can hear from the house.
I think it's a.
It's a whine.
Anyway.
Any questions? Okay, so with all the questions answered, um, we have a motion to sell moves. Sorry. All on paper?
I.
Okay, closing areas. Uh, down to item number sixteen, item sixteen is about lights on the park, you'll do Menlo School, and as I am a professor over at Menlo College, uh, I'm not participating in this, we'll just chat a meeting, so, uh, as the chairman of the meeting, I'm like, yeah.
Well, actually, um, our price mayor is in transit, and he was hopeful that he would, uh, be here, uh, hold it, but seeing that it's not, um, we will, um, uh, hear the, um, report from Lisa about the special permit for.
Thank you, good evening. Uh, the head of before you, and your request for a special permit to allow temporary lights for Menlo School's homecoming football game at Carton Field. The field is located at the corner of El Camino Real and Alahonda Avenue, and it's jointly owned by and utilized by Menlo School and Menlo College. This time is governed by a conditional use permit that was issued by the city council in nineteen sixty-five. Among other conditions, one condition restricts lighting as well as evening activities. Atherton Municipal Court provides the process for the town to issue special event permits to regulate events on private and public property that are not typically permitted. The city manager is responsible for enforcement of this special event regulations and is authorized to issue special event permits. The city manager may refer it to the council when the public interest would be better served by public review at a public meeting. As the Carton Field conditional use permit includes a limitation on lighting and nighttime events, the city manager has to refer this item to the city council for consideration. Menlo School requests a special event permit to allow temporary lights for one evening for its homecoming football game on October eleventh, uh, from five thirty PM until nine PM. The event will not include the use of amplified sound, and all other homecoming activities will take place on the main, on the main campus, including parking. Tab now noticed that this special event permit request in this public hearing to all proprietors within five hundred feet of the site, um, you received one public comment from Mr. Getty that was included in your packet. Um, we've also been included with additional public comments that you should have before you, um, from Mr. Lisa, Mr. Kearns, and Mr. Keller, as well as a letter from his goal. Um, in addition to, um, Mr. Getty requested that the use permit, um, and its staff's analysis of compliance with that nineteen sixty-five permit, and be prepared in nineteen, in two thousand five, be provided for your information. It's only as indicated for your information this evening, as compliance with use permit is not properly agendized for discussion this evening. The special event permit as requested is limited to one event at one evening, lasting about three and a half hours, uh, and the issuance of this permit does not change any of the conditions within the nineteen sixty-five use permit, and does not establish a precedent for other events. Any future events would require consideration of its separate special event permit or amended to the nineteen sixty-five use permit. At behalf of to try to answer any of your questions, I believe our representative from Menlo School, thank you, that would also like to make a comment.
Thank you, Lisa, for your. Um, any member of the council have any clarifying questions to?
I think there's another question. Said, we haven't answered a, um, two special event permit or other, some sort of exception to the, uh, the nineteen sixty-five license order, I'm sorry.
So you, no, I don't believe, do the city manager will be issuing other special events at this time?
We do have a third time.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's, I guess it's gonna be for a bill, um, related to the specialty use permit, we're not creating a precedent, this is a one-time use for the duration of, that doesn't have.
That's correct, in fact, the purpose of the specialty use permit, one of the purposes is to do something that is otherwise not permitted by the city's code. The laws, like, things like that that are temporary in nature, that, that, like, a person's having a wedding, um, at somebody's house or something like that, so, there are impacts, there are impacts that will violate the city codes, but that's why they do it as a special permit, they've noticed everybody, and then the council, I think, figure out, is the whole they use or not.
I'd like to open it up to make a link, um, to, um, there's some number of people who want to see.
Sir, uh, uh, chair, uh, you're, you're my chair, I'm sorry, usually it starts with the applicant.
Oh, yeah, oh, yes, oh, there's Sam.
Good evening. Thank you for, uh, taking the time to hear our request tonight. Um, as you all know, Menlo School's been here in Atherton for a hundred and six years now, and, uh, I think that was longer than Atherton's been a town, and it is longer than any of our neighbors have been there, although I have verified that, uh, completely. As we know, uh, if, as far as we know, for proof, this is our first special event permit in that time. Uh, to be clear, as Lisa said, our request is for permission to hold our two thousand nineteen homecoming game under temporary lights to be concluded by nine PM. I think it's reasonable to ask, why are you asking for this, so, so let me start there. Uh, first and foremost, it's fun for the kids. Uh, it's fun for the kids to play and cheer their colleagues on, on the lights, there's something about the bright light, my lights, uh, phenomenon that I think kids enjoy, and what's good for kids is always my first and sometimes my only criteria for evaluating decisions at the school. Second, homecoming for us is a real community building event, and we found that holding the game at three thirty, we haven't had for decades, is a hardship on some parents, particularly our parents who have less flexibility in their jobs, specifically our parents who receive financial aid. As we work to be a truly inclusive community, we seek to allow these parents to join in on all the highlights of the evening. It's fair to ask why we don't just hold this game under the lights in another segment, such as Woodside or Sequoia, as we do for home games every year. Homecoming just isn't homecoming if we don't play the game at home. And finally, this year is a particularly unique year, as we hope to blend our homecoming events with the kickoff of our Menlo one hundred capital campaign, that's raising money for a variety of things, including faculty housing, faculty salaries, and financial aid, so that we can continue to serve all of our families regardless of financial needs. I think it's worth making a couple of other points that I think are relevant. The first is that Menlo School is a great citizen of this town. As a school, we host all kinds of events and activities that benefit the larger community, even though they don't benefit us directly. Examples include hosting the Peninsula Bridge programs in the summer and across the school year for your charge, so that students in less resourced school districts can have a chance at a great education. We host the Music at Menlo Summer Concert Series, as well as the Winter Residency that brings world-class musicians and renown to Atherton every summer for sixteen years, receiving no rental income for this service. We provide parking for horse trailers at the annual Menlo Charity Horse Show in our lots, so the trailers aren't littering the streets of Atherton. We allow the police academy to conduct its graduation ceremony in our hall at no charge. We provided a training ground for Atherton Police and other first responders to run a tactical school shooting simulation over a period of days, so they will be better prepared should they ever need to respond to a school shooting incident in our town. We supported the town when has needs for parking or facility use, as well as other projects that are important to the town. We are currently paying part of the salary of Atherton's School Resource Officer to help relieve. We are currently paying part of the salary of Atherton's School Resource Officer to help relieve the budget conscious towns has faced. And in short, we very much view ourselves as an asset that is integral to this town well beyond our educational mission and the ways in which we add to the property values of town residents. Second point is this, Menlo School is a good neighbor, and I would ask, because this happens sometimes, that you not confuse us with Menlo College over whom we have no control. We work hard to adhere to our commitments to our neighbors. We've reduced our traffic count numbers coming in well under the budgeted limits the town has requested. We limit practice times for athletics teams, never rent our facilities, and turn down numerous revenue generating opportunities each year in order to adhere to our commitments to our neighbors. We hold annual neighbor meetings to hear their concerns and to alert them to upcoming events or construction, and have only gotten positive feedback from our neighbors in my time here. We maintain a neighbor webpage and have a staff member for cooperation, Lauren Arns, who is here tonight, who's available by phone or email to neighbors three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And we've been responsive to neighbor concerns, as Stuart Rosenberg can attest, and we go out of our way to be supportive. Finally, we understand that this represents an inconvenience for neighbors living around the field, which is why if it's approved, we intend to invite the neighbors to join us for the festivities, the speakers, the game, and the free food that afternoon and evening. And for those unable or uninterested in joining us, we'll be issuing gift cards to neighbors who live around our field to go out to dinner that night on us to avoid any inconvenience our festivities may cause them. In sum, we think this is a reasonable request for a school that adds greatly to the community and the richness of Atherton. And it's one that we hope we can, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, uh, just because it says here, no amplified music or sound, what are you doing to get the football game under the?
We typically sing the national anthem on the color, we have a jazz band that's out there playing, it's not amplified. And we, you know, we, we don't amplify the, the game score or the game call.
So, uh, I have a question.
Yeah.
So the event is just strictly the football game, it's not the dance, or the, the homecoming, or do you have?
We always have a dance after homecoming, it's in our gym.
In the gym.
Uh, and, and it's over by the time the CUP said that. It's all in, it's all contained, everything else will be contained on our main campus.
No.
Thank you.
Are there any other members in the public who'd like to make a comment at this time?
Well, be brief, my name is, uh, Steve Miller, give my background in just a moment, but, uh, first thank for the opportunity to address the committee in this group. And, uh, I will be speaking strongly in favor of this proposal for the lighted homecoming game. So by the way, background, I'm an Atherton resident, I grew up in Atherton, uh, my mother still lives here, my sister still lives here, I have a long history in the town. I have brothers in the area, and I live here over in Lindenwood with my wife and four children. All four of those children went to Menlo, uh, two of them have graduated, one of them played football, I also went to Menlo, I played football. And many years ago, obviously, and I only highlight that to you because, uh, I have perspective over those many years as to cartons and games and all those kind of things. And playing under the lights is a true privilege that Menlo kids frankly have never had. Obviously, kids in LA are able to play their lights for different reasons, and Sacred Heart sometimes they have, once a year, they'll have lights. But Menlo never had that privilege, there are hundreds of kids that came before me or after, have never had that privilege. It's a real privilege, creates a lot of energy, creates a lot of enthusiasm, so not only is it fun for the kids, as I think Dan referenced, it also has some external benefits in the form of, um, creating a environment for some of our key fundraising needs around diversity, scholarship, faculty housing, et cetera, and as well, as Dan referenced, it allows the socioeconomic disadvantaged part of our population to attend games that simply can't attend at three o'clock, they don't have the flexibility. So in summary, uh, I'm strongly in favor of this proposal. I feel like on one hand you have a three and a half hour request, and on the other hand you have some amazing community benefits, and appreciate that.
Any other members of the public who'd like to speak?
Uh, Stuart Rosenberg, one of your favorites, and, um, I'm not as affected as much by the noise and the traffic and all the sounds of the nighttime football game with whistles and, um, I will say that the college, the high school has been a great neighbor, and sometimes they get loved together in college. The college does have numerous special use permits, there's never been those. And there are rock concerts, in fact, one weekend we had three rock concerts in a row, always special use permits. So, you know, unfortunately, the high school gets lumped into that, it's really the body of work that affects the neighbors that are right there. Now, in a perfect world, I think it'd be fabulous for the high school to be able to have a night game. Uh, I, I have concerns because Sacred Heart has a night game, and they said it was only going to be one time, and now I understand it's every year. So, you know, I'm concerned that if we give in to this conditional use permit, and I'll just read this to you, has everybody read the conditional use permit? Everybody on the, I, I hope so, George, have you read it? You know, um, it just says that, um, uh, conditional use permit is granted for the parcel of land, um, permitting, permitting purchase of said land by the school for use in connection with said private school, subject to and upon the following conditions. There shall be no illumination, nor shall there be any activities thereon between sunset and sunrise. And then it says, the school agrees to perform and be bound by all of the conditions and provisions of this conditional use permit. I'm not a lawyer, but what that says to me is, if you agree to this, we'll save the land, and if you don't, we won't. And so, um, so really my concerns are more to do with future special use permits, I, I think there's already an overabundance of special use permits. There's an overuse of all the athletic facilities at Menlo School. Um, I had a twenty-five year relationship with Menlo, worked with, I went to Menlo, so I dare do, it's a fabulous school. Um, and, but, you know, the neighbors that are directly on that wall, I think are the ones who should make the decision because they're the ones who are impacted the most. And so, uh, I would just ask you to consider all that, I mean, if it's one time only, and there'll never be another special use permit like that, I just don't think you can get those guarantees. And so my concern is if you give this, that, you know, it'll open up some floodgates. So, uh, that's my biggest concern. But in a perfect world, I'd love to see the school get their, their night, their one night game. Uh, and the other point I'd like to make is in the past, I mean, Dan mentioned to me in passing at the last meeting, and I just said I didn't think the neighbors would support it, and usually their high school has gone out of their way and met with all the neighbors that would be affected. And in almost every other instance, they've been able to convince the neighbors, so I think we did it backwards this time. I think the neighbors got the letter, and they said, oh my God, what's this? They go in, and I, I think a better approach would have just been to reach out to the neighbors first and explain, as Dan so eloquently did, uh, and maybe there would be a different outcome with the neighbors, I don't know, I can't speak for that. But anyhow, I, I thank you for your time, anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Any other person? Excuse me, um, our vice mayor has just, uh, arrived, and so I'll turn. Okay, all right, he just, uh, moved, so I'll be. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, six great menos. Uh, I'm gonna chime in initially with restating a little bit about my background, because again, I think, you know, that is probably not as busy a deal as what I see in my business, I'm a, I'm a national real estate developer, we develop apartments, we build shopping centers. And frankly, ironically, as I've talked to him, I'm often on his side arguing that a development should be allowed in an area where the neighbors don't want that to happen. And if I can win that battle, I'm gonna make a lot of money, and I've made a lot of money doing that, so I've fought the other side of that battle. But I've also unfortunately seen what precedents can do when something fairly innocuous is granted, if you come to, uh, Bill? Ryan, are there something over there? Uh, Bill, Ryan, are you there?
Sorry. Voting issue.
Can I talk, or are you guys fine?
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. I see too often, too often, that even minor precedents, fine as they may be and well-intended as they may be, lead to a slippery slope where it becomes a precedent for something else, it becomes greater and greater and greater. Today, we are currently living with a number of exceptions to the CUP. We discussed amongst ourselves taking legal action and forcing a rollback to what the CUP states, as Stuart pointed out, and we have, believe, we believe we have legal leverage to be able to do that, we chose not to do that, the schools have done a homeration, which I recognize in some of the events, I receive newsletters. I acknowledge that, so we're at a state of, in a state of daytime, if you will, with the schools, and we would like to continue that. But this, to me, because I see this in too many other communities, we can say Atherton is unique, but their community is unique. Around the country, as these precedents are set, and this is the first time this type of precedent has been requested in a hundred and six years, right? This is a big deal. And they always start with something fairly innocuous, well-intentioned, but then they go further. We already see with the exceptions in Sacred Heart, a lot of people now are arguing that Sacred Heart has done something, well, then of course it must be done here. On the last go-round, when people were talking about amplification, breaking the sixty, decimal, sixty-five decimal level that we have, uh, the whole broken up part was cited as a precedent. So precedents, by their very nature, by their definition, are used to get other things done, once a little step is taken, it's natural that the school should try and take another step, I, I wouldn't blame them for doing that. They're an inch, they'll take a mile, that's what they should do, they should attempt to do that. It's our job as homeowners, and frankly, your job as town council, to protect the interests of all parties. In our case, we have very valuable homes, we have homes that could be impacted significantly, not so much by some of the homecoming. By the way, I went to a school in Detroit area, we didn't have homecoming, my high school, because it was under construction at the time. We had it in an adjacent high school, and I recall having a great time, we had our gas actually back in our school because the cafeteria was supposed to finish at that time, but our field was not, it was undergoing renovation. So we went to an adjacent high school, had a nice evening event under the lights. I recall having a dad feelings about going next door, a lot of fun. And I really feel that the schools should have done a better job of anticipating this, hearing three things all year on a Wednesday night. Obviously, should have second guessed that there would be unanimous disapproval of this request, and that's what we have, we have a number of letters, not one neighbor is in favor of what is being requested. All neighbors have voiced concerns similar to mine, and I have a little bit more experience in seeing how these things play out. And I am most concerned because I know where this is claimed to be, because I see it firsthand. And what will eventually happen will be erosion of our property values. There's no doubt about it, we are homes, we are different than Holbrook, we're different than Sacred Heart, you don't have homes next to those areas. And so that's probably why those precedents were given, and where people like me that would step up and protest that. Well, now we have people, our homes are worth a lot of money, we ultimately have to disclose what's been going, what is going on. And those disclosures will weaken the value of our properties, and it's up to the town council, only pick the interests of the schools and other people in the community, but our interests as well. It isn't about the three and a half hours, it's about what comes next, and what comes next, and what comes next. And we've already seen a lack of willingness on the part of people in this room to enforce the current CUP as it is. So I have no confidence that any exception that we allow, that you allow tonight, is gonna be handed, I have no confidence in that. You can't give me that guarantee, you can say you can, but you can't, I can't. We also have legal recourse, so no matter what you guys do, we can get injunctions, we can hire attorneys, and we can go that route, and we probably will. And we can stop the event from happening, hitting them. So rather than get into a big fight with each other, I think we should maintain the daytime. Continue to work to build relations and do different things, find different venues for this, I think it's great to have a homecoming event under the lights, just don't have it in my backyard. Any questions?
Any other members of the public who'd like to speak?
Just a quick comment, my name's Charlie King, I'm an Atherton resident, a former Menlo parent. Has benefited greatly by saying a number of kids go through the program, and, uh, yeah, I, I feel like I've heard this argument so many times, and I, and I understand that, uh, neighboring homeowners want to protect the property values, and the best way you can protect your property value is to support an institution like a Menlo that continues to reinvest in the community. It's not about a three and a half hour noisy event. You know, it's about keeping, uh, keeping the, the facilities of, of, of the school updated, it's about keeping, uh, you know, the streets, uh, filled with kids that, you, you know, that you trust when they walk by your house. It's about, um, it's about reinvestment in the community, and I, but I can't, the one thing I can't understand is, why does Menlo, why does Menlo always have to be the good neighbor? Why are they the ones that are always expected to, you know, bend over backwards for the neighborhood? You know, for this one little event, I'd like to see the neighbors bend over for Menlo. We're only asking for a few hours. They should, you know, show an appreciation for what Menlo's done, what they're investing in the community by giving them a few hours.
You did so much job, any other person, any other public who'd like to speak? I'm not helping the back council. For deliberation.
Vice mayor is not participating in running, but I would point out that the law requires council head with the goal to review your entire record if you desire to vote. Some people spoke before he came in, and he can't vote on this issue unless, because of due process, this is fairness. You can't vote unless you first review the record, so you hear their comments as well, because otherwise that could sway you with your record. So you either have to abstain, or there has to be some kind of community solidarity to review the record before, before you can.
So, I just want to miss was, uh.
Don't, I think, uh, he has to review the record, so, not hear your.
No, I wasn't gonna summarize it, I was just gonna say that the people that we missed, we missed basic classes, Andrew's presentation, Dan's, um, presentation, and I think.
Another gentleman's. Doesn't, I mean, inflection, the way they present themselves, I mean, even if we listen to them after the term, they're, they're credibility, most acts of.
So do we wanna take a recess while you go through the film for, um, you know, ten minutes, fifteen minutes? Could we do that, I mean, up to the pleasure of the council, that would, that'd be.
Yes, we're gonna change the votes, Rick, abstains. How many votes does it take to pass or?
Three.
Do the one.
I'm sorry, what's the answer, special?
This is not resolutional, and it's not ordered, it's a minute, or, and Menlo is all required, maybe reponderance of those that are allowed to vote.
All of us can participate in the discussion.
Um, I don't see why not, but the only problem is, it could, well, technically, technically, the whole concept of reviewing the record, so that when you make your comments and deliberations, you have the benefit of all of the information that's in the record. If you now start talking about something that's not in the record, that's a problem, you can't, you can't take the, the note of your contemporaries. So technically, I think that would be prohibited, but unless it's something kind of generic, it's just a concept. I think that would be theoretically, you know, theoretical position, the problem is, what if your theoretical position is you should never write a CUP, that's a special permit for, and then. And then you have to see where that can go and create a problem, but, um, I think maybe it will depend on what the questions and participation will agree.
Can then present again?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll read the...
Can then present again, since that's all they miss?
I would. All right. And this is, this, just so you understand, this is a little bit like a trial. This, this is a public hearing, it's a quasi-official hearing. And the problem that you can't go with, if you're a juror, go into the courtroom and say, sorry, I'm late, I'll just, you know, catch up later or something, they don't let that happen. And so it's similar here, who would let you catch up later if that, if it maybe is so late or behind?
Okay. Well, um, and, um...
Sorry, I played with my fingers where I was, I had no control.
You, you did your best, you really did. And we were just making the effort, being... So, um, looking to my fellow councilmembers, do you have comments, questions, discussions, deliberations?
I do, if you want.
Yes, Gary?
I'm gonna, I'm looking for a little clarity, because there are multiple speakers, and they had mentioned that it was supported by, and other individuals as well as, uh, Mr. Getty had supported the fact that there was significant outreach by the school. But there was something that Mr. Getty said that I had carried along. Uh, there was something that Mr. Getty had said that he had support from all of the speakers, but I don't see anything that supports that statement in the information provider here today. Is there something that I'm missing? And...
In fact, I think we have a letter from somebody who claims to be, they had this blackout, but she's, uh, she says that she lives, uh, near Memo's school, and I support. You have four?
There's one.
Yeah, I see that.
That's a margin three in opposition.
Okay. But in reference to the state, the statement was that it said, "All my neighbors are against this." How many neighbors are we referring to? And why do I not see anything relating to it? If it's ten neighbors, maybe it's important, right? I might...
I don't know, I'll give a cheer.
Yes.
The law makes it pretty simple. You're, you're, you can only vote on the record. The record is information in front of you, you have a testimony that's made to, you can't, if somebody says, "Hey, all my neighbors say this," unless they're here, unless there's something that I didn't buy, can't lie.
Okay, so, um, thank you. So I'm just wanting to, you know, chime in here. Are there any other neighbors, uh, in the community that is, who did not speak, who are here in opposition to this?
I think we're passing the deliberation. Yeah?
Okay, so my, my thought is, um, and that Memo's school probably should have done a better job without recent specific, right, in the past. I, I find this to be a reasonable request. Um, it's a three-hour thing, it's something that, uh, you know, the authority to do, I think it's, uh, uh, a one-time thing that we're doing now. And I understand everyone's comments being guaranteed, and that'll happen in the future, I think that's right. But I think that, that the reason we have the ability to do something like this is so that when something would appear to build community and appear to build, you know, be a helpful thing, have relatively cause irritation to people who live nearby, that it just makes sense to me, is my standpoint. Um, yeah, makes sense.
So, um, I have a little different take on it, um, thanks to one of us. Uh, I do understand when Anne says, basically, the reason we must do this after 106 years, um, and to give these kids opportunity to play under the lights, you know, Friday night lights, it's a, it's a, it's exciting, um, team-building, um, experience. Unfortunately, uh, Memo's school does not have a football field that has Friday night lights. And, uh, homecoming is a special deal, so one, one, uh, night a year, uh, this night, whatever reason, maybe because of your fundraising efforts and things, but it will come back to us again next year, because then the kids are gonna wanna do it, anyway. My friend, they ju, they just will, I, I know that. I look at sunrise to sunset, you cannot have lights. Sunrise to sunset. Sunset on October 11th, I'm sure y'all have looked this up, right? Sunset on October 11th, uh, is at eight oh three. That's the official sunset. But as you know, the twilight kind of begins at about seven thirty. Three and a half hours, if the, if the game started at four o'clock to seven thirty, you would not need lights. And I know that in the past, the game has started at three P M. to, um, six thirty, uh, or three, four, five, six, yes, six thirty, um, three and a half hours. Um, I, I'm, I understand Memo, Memo's school kids, they, um, they're very special kids. I mean, they get the best education in all of Attleton, for our high school experience. Right? They've got the best principal, executive director in Anne. They've got the best of all these things. And of course, they want to experience the Friday night lights, uh, and that kind of football experience. It just, uh, is unfortunate, I think, that, um, it happens to be right next door to a development, uh, you know, very high-class homes, uh, you have two residents, um, right next door, and, um, good neighbors, I just, I'm having a hard time justifying it. I think that if you could start it at four and at seven thirty, all would be well, because even if you go, uh, until your nine P M., you're only gonna be playing for an hour, kind of under the lights. And it just seems like, I don't know, maybe the residents can, uh, come to grips with it only during one hour, from like eight o'clock until nine o'clock, under the lights. I think the school's being very generous to offer to, uh, treat you guys to go out to dinner, uh, from, you know, seven to nine, nine thirty, so that you're not affected by it. I think that would be a good compromise. I think there's a, there's a compromise here. I really do. And I think we're all intelligent, smart people. It's not black or white. I think that we want to make things work together, and I would think that we need to be able to, so I'm kind of throwing out those kinds of possibilities out at my door. Yes, come up and speak, respond to me.
Can we do this? What, babe?
I'm gonna reopen the...
Everybody have the...
I'm gonna reopen the...
Anybody?
Yeah, that's fine. Come on up. We're gonna reopen the public comment, because this is an important thing.
Um, I'm, I'm one of those people that did look up sunset. Sunset on October 11th, actually, is six thirty-six. Lauren, I'm just Memo's school, I'm the director of operations, as Pam mentioned earlier. Uh, then just a simple Google search. You can go right into Google and search for sunset on October 11th.
You said it's at six thirty?
Six thirty-six.
No, did we fall down?
I'm not sure, but Google search says six thirty-six.
No, we don't fall down. Yeah.
I'm only relying on Google, so I don't know. I just wanted to clarify that point, because that makes the compromise much more...
I apologize. My, my bad, sir. I think I still have it up here. Anyway, okay. So, well, that's the, yeah.
I'd just like to clarify, the gentleman said that the neighbors do nothing for the school, and the school always gets screwed.
That's not...
I don't think that's accurate. I was helping with the sports fields, I helped them get a variance on their building. I mean, I would say, this is probably the first time where I've been lawful with a high school. And so I would, you know, wish for the gentleman to take that off the record. I don't really want that big rap into the record, because I don't think it's true at all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes? We're, we're gonna limit to the three members.
I'd like to clarify what I meant by "all neighbors." We have email and phone numbers of all the neighbors in here. All the neighbors are primarily those that have bought the course, have bought the field, and those that are across the street where we have our tent, which we lost some, John Grass Camp, for example, obviously, around from the jump to him. I put out an email asking if there was any support for this. I received no positive support. I also did not receive responses from her, to be frank. But every response that I did receive, and I don't directly report what I, but I did see, every response that I received, we have several letters, was negative. There was one neighbor that did not want anyone to write it, because he's a really high-profile guy, who's also pretty negative, he would knock single lettering. So we're seeing no support for this.
There's, there's the truth. Um, I, I understand that, and I'm not in any way disputed. Problem is, the record is something that's public, that's to see, and we're here. And so you can't just come and say, now, we do have a letter, or four letters, that were in, are in the record, from neighbors along the street that have objected. And we have one letter from somebody somewhere nearby, through language, that to points of, heard people voting on, and that's what will make up the record, and that's the only thing that, sort of, you that vote, that tells us a lie, I'm putting your name here.
Thank you. And I appreciate what you're getting, what you're finding, and so...
So one comment I have is, um, I, I think it's healthy for us to come back next year. If, if there is a request next year, we will, oh, I'm sorry, I don't wanna, um, we started from...
It's okay, yeah.
I was gonna say that, that you mentioned that we're setting a precedent on that, if they're back next year, and then we've had a bad experience, the answer would be no, bad experience, we aren't... So I mean, I, to me, that's not a, a bad...
It's certain.
Yeah?
It's not a certainty.
Right, thanks for giving me just one minute. I'm a parent of Memo children, too, I live in Attleton.
And you...
The argument I hear is, it's gonna decrease the value of our house, of our homes and property. And we're talking about a three-hour event, three-and-a-half-hour event, a one-time request. Our kids are thrilled at the opportunity to potentially, you know, have a homecoming game on their home field. We played at Troya, we played at Foothill, we played at Sacred Heart at nighttime last week, last year. We played at M.A. at night last year. And the kids are just confused about why they don't get the same opportunity that the other school around town, yet we're incredibly good citizens. My kids played high school tennis at Carter Courts, and I park in front of Sacred Heart, because I can't park near the courts, right? Sometimes I park at Memo Circus though, where I'm a member, because there's no parking in front of Sacred Heart, because all the Memo kids park in front of Sacred Heart. So I just think that the students, and the parents, and the community, and that, um, but the neighbors, and I think it's time the neighbors give a little bit to us as a community. It's an incredible community-building event. We enjoyed it last year at Sacred Heart, we enjoyed it last year at M.A., and after 106 years, I think it's time for us to do it as well.
Here.
Here.
Our, this is the public hearing, now closed.
Okay. Yes, I'll close public hearing. So, uh, going back to council, are you have a comment?
Um, well, thank you, everybody, for all your comments, uh, my colleagues for having their comments, all the comments being open to begin, required a process. Um, and sitting here and listening, uh, I, I understand the concerns related to a special use of the event, and that a special event's permit, and that, you know, the one-time number doesn't always apply to, you know, things. I, uh, I understand my councilwoman's comments related to daylight savings and so, and I think the college could have done more in possible outreach, maybe solving a few of the problems, and maybe considering the daylight, which I understand, those, uh, but I look at this as, this singular event, and how we behave at this event would be what we could consider by somebody at later in time, if the college was seeking a additional event at night. But for this event, it seems that there are precautions taken into play, and there's been an effort to, uh, compensate or to hopefully tell somebody if they wanted to go out to dinner that the camp, the school would be providing them, very similar to what Sacred Heart, you would make at your nightly event. So I am of the mind, similar to Mike, in the extent where I'm only considering it for this event as a one-time event. I'm not going to speak to tomorrow, but what I will say is, I believe that there could have been a better effort by the campus. I understand the residents' concerns. I understand the concerns that it becomes a virus, that it is a potential future impact to a real estate piece of property. But as a special event for a one-time event, I believe that this would be a good event for the students of the campus. And I think that for the window of opportunity, without amplified music or speaker device to, um, raise more concerns for the residents, but I think that it's gonna be looked at under a watchful eye, and that the campus, if this is approved, should be, you know, aware of that, so, for any future events. So I'm supportive of the one-time event at the campus.
Do you have any?
I don't, no.
So I guess, um, my faux pas with my hours difference, uh, but I still think that, um, we need to maybe adjust. Um, if I'm gonna vote to approve the one-time event, I would like to see some movement in the beginning time, uh, from five thirty to four thirty, and have it from four thirty to seven P M. Uh, I just think that that would, um, be a compromise that could be made by the school, and then the kids follow over to the, uh, auditorium for the dance a little early. Uh, and then it would be pulling over at nine, uh, nine o'clock, nine thirty, you know, to ten o'clock in the transition. So that's my, uh, that's, that's my, you know, and, um, so I think we should take a vote, uh, call for a motion, if somebody wants to make a motion. If I'm gonna make a motion, that's a private motion to approve.
I, I'd like to approve the special event, and I'll say...
Just the way it is.
As is.
Um...
And I'll say it.
We have a motion to approve the special event permit, as it's written, and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All in favor of my comments? So, um, and...
Tuesday, yes.
Tuesday, yeah. So, thank you all for coming, and move on to the next, um, item, which is item number seventeen. No, no. Actually, would you turn towards the mic?
Okay. Uh... Is that right? Oh. Okay. All right. So now we're going on to item number seventeen, which is a discussion on, um, a proposed sculpture that the Arts Group and the Oklahoma Art Foundation and the Dames, uh, would like to fund, to put, uh, in this area, or very close to this area, so staff, what is it doing that?
Uh, thank you, uh, mayor, members of the council. Uh, the town has received an offer of donation for this sculpture from Oklahoma Art Foundation, uh, Attleton Arts Foundation. that the Arts Committee and the Overcomplotar Foundation and the Dames, would like to fund its foot, uh, in this area, or very close to this area, so staff, you want to do that?
Oh, good. Uh, thank you, uh, mayor, members of the council. Uh, the town has received an offer of a donation based sculpture from the Overcomplotar Foundation and the Athens Arts Foundation. Uh, they have, uh, narrowed down their selection to three different sculptures with a preference to be placed in the park. Uh, they have indicated that their preferences, I don't remember two, the, uh, sculpture. Uh, the cost of sculptures, uh, in terms of value per donation range, between fifty-five thousand dollars and thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, those costs don't include the shipping, handling, um, transporting or tax. Uh, that would be covered, those costs would be covered by the foundation. Depending on where, uh, the sculpture would go, or which sculpture was selected, uh, the cost for installation, dressing up the area, would be more by the, would be more by the town. Uh, and so for that, we're recommending a budget of up to fifteen thousand dollars to accommodate that. Concrete foundation, other things that require to support the sculpture, as well as to, uh, dress up the area. The, uh, accommodations have, uh, requested consideration of the intersection of Watkins and Middlefield Road as a placement alternative. Uh, staff is a little concerned about that placement, predominantly because it's our access point for the channel. Uh, and so there's some additional liability in trying to protect a sculpture at that location while we're moving equipment from here. This is a concern to staff. We're requesting that you, uh, you know, the request is the consideration of accepting the, uh, the donation, as well as providing some guidance as to that potential, the potential location. There's also recommendation that if the location is to be within the Overcomplotar, Overcomplotar, that the council delegate the final placement decision to the recognition committee. With that, staff, do you have any questions?
I got a quick question, and maybe we can't answer it, but we can, uh, to work together. In the past, when we've accepted sculptures, and there's, I think, three, four of them, did the Arts Committee not pay for actually getting them installed? Um, it seems like, if, if it's a substantial amount of money to put it on a, on a pad, that I would think that, you know, we would go back to the foundation, uh, because the Arts, I think, is gonna be exhausted here. We would say, okay, but this is what it's gonna cost to install it as well. And I, I thought that in the past, they paid for everything, including the nameplate.
Yeah, I've, I've been able to call, uh, I think, certainly, I think of that.
But I think that's a reasonable thing, so I think that the intent was.
Can I respond to you?
Yeah, sure.
I think that, of course, it was, it, it, and that the, they, it was donated, or they didn't have to buy it, that the person gave it, and then the Art, uh, the Art Foundation, uh, paid for the installation. You know, I don't think that they had to buy it from an artist, and then, yeah, they, 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 and so she donated it, installation.
Well, I think that the, the snail, which is more, was purchased, and the snail, I think the Arts Committee sort of installed it, and they had paid for it, and I think that, and I don't think that they're thinking that they wouldn't pay for it. And they, they also paid for the, the shipping and getting it all in here, so I think that we would ask them to, both of them. I asked you a question. Am I right?
Oh, right, exactly.
That was my question.
That will be a frank, frank answer. The offer is, the information that I received did not include an offer for permanently costing installation. That being said, you think certainly being the acceptance conditional on it covering all the costs.
And so the related question, which is, I'm surprised that the range in values that are here for these, I mean, there's, it's already about thousand five, thousand, right? So, you want to say, so, the, you be some.
So, so that's, that's actual cash return change. So, so one answer to that, if we, if we got a lot of less expensive statues, or if they have the money to make it more expensive, then you can figure they have that money to make a lot less expensive installation.
The image that you show of the proposed location at Watkins and Middlefield, this, this had been discussed at the Park and Record Committee, and I'm pretty sure when it was discussed at the Park and Record Committee, it was the other side of Watkins. Not the side that the channel's on, but the side where there's that little parcel, right, on, on the north side of Watkins and Middlefield.
No, parcel.
There, uh, actually, I think, Farmers' Chutes.
That's where all the signs go.
I could, I, I, I think there's a piece of problems there. At least that's what was, I'm pretty sure that's what was discussed.
I don't, I don't like it.
I just asked one of the question, I should, I learned that this is the location.
Yeah, I didn't mean to, when they discussed, where the, where the Park Foundation had discussed this. Yes, and I've spoken to also the Olmans, and that's the corner. They were thinking of beautifying to be a welcoming thing to the park. Okay, item number nineteen. Uh, review and consideration of approval of revisions to the Middlefield bike lane project, and provide direction and to staff regarding the proposed improvements to crosswalks at Valparaiso and Main. I guess that's all.
Thank you. So these two items, uh, came about through the Transportation Committee. They, um, acted to move these to you for consideration, so, um, if it, if it's all right with you, I'd like to do each individually. And so we have a recommendation to approve a revision to the Middlefield bike lanes project layout. The original layout we have attached to your staff report. Um, and so we received a request from a resident in the, in the area with concerns about, um, traffic on Middlefield, and originally he requested the installation of a dual left turn lane between Watkins and James. After reviewing that request and speaking with the gentleman, the, the desire, uh, to put in dual left turn lane we didn't feel was appropriate, because there was no place to make left turns in between Watkins and James. And so, but understanding the desire to make things a little easier for those turn movements, we talked to the designer on the, of the Middlefield project, and we, we have the space, and we have the ability to extend those turn pockets, both at Watkins and James, um, to facilitate turn movements and move people out of the through lane on, on Middlefield. In consideration that we have just moved to the park for the town facilities, uh, having a little extra use space on Watkins is, is appropriate. So, uh, with that, we'll be able to give her that approval, we'll have that implemented to prove it. We'll have that implemented with, uh, the strapping that PGD will be putting in after, after they serve the silver plate.
Any questions on that aspect of the site?
What was that first?
Um, so, currently we're ours, do you think you're gonna do like a huge stamp? Just a couple more, and, um, it says that there is a detectable, last picture. A detectable warning service pad at each hospital.
Oh, are you looking at the plan? Yeah, so as part of the Middlefield project, we are doing a variety of improvements, and part of that is improving the crossings here at Watkins, putting in the EAS, like, warning services for crosswalks.
But it's not flashy.
No, these are just, uh, the surface.
Yeah, okay, I just.
The surface pads.
Okay.
And so what we're talking about, and you've already improved the project, it's, um, it's happening moving forward, this is just a revision to extend where we're at in the pocket.
And we feel that these, uh, crosswalks will slow cars down, people will be safer. I would be impressed.
That is something for you to consider, that hasn't been approved as part of the Middlefield project.
Hey, Rick? Uh, okay, so you're proposing to extend the lane of the left turn lane? Uh, and if I'm looking at it properly, it looks like you're extending the left turn lane both on the Watkins and onto each of James and Lane?
No, so the, these are the original design plans.
Oh, these are the original.
These are the original design plans, and providing for your information. So what we would do is for, um, as a southbound traffic, we extend the left turn onto Watkins. For southbound traffic, we would extend the left turn onto James.
And you're extending it by how much?
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet each?
So you decided about those cars?
It's total distance.
Total distance of fifty feet.
So you're extending that.
This movement, uh, extending along, so.
You're not adding another fifty feet.
Yeah, I'm just trying.
It'll be a total.
No, it's an extension.
So it's just paint?
Yeah.
No, you're not gonna have to widen or anything?
No, it's just paint.
And you're sure that there's not space for that, plus bicycle was to get through?
Yeah, it gets taken out of the, the median structure.
I wanna make sure that we're doing our lights. That's right. That's all the same time I get up.
Any, uh, comments on this, this part of the site? Seeing how they're prepared for final discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, staff's request to increase the, uh, left end turning lanes approximately fifty feet at James going southbound and at Watkins going, um, middlefield.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
So the second part of this.
I'm sorry, I know it raised before, it's called, it's not, it's, doesn't require refusal. Yeah, I just wanna be transparent, as we discuss something affecting our school, I think, you do it at school.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so Sacred Heart School's admitted a request to the Transportation Committee for consideration of the installation of a rectangle rapid flashy beacons, uh, at the intersection of Valparaiso, Alena slash Green, as well as, uh, for some additional crosswalk enhancements, making that crosswalk, uh, advanced one, a sharp speed. The school intends to deploy a, uh, a crossing guard at that location. They have a new building that's opening up at the beginning of the school year. Uh, and so they anticipate that they'll probably have more foot traffic at that corner. So the, uh, school was able to make a presentation at the Park and Record Committee, I'm sorry, at the Transportation Committee regarding their request. The town does not have any resources currently allocated to doing this type of improvement. And Sacred Heart School's indicated that they could, uh, fund the installation, uh, but it would be potentially seeking some sort of cost reimbursement from the town. Uh, as a reminder, this is a shared intersection with the City of Menlo Park, and so whatever, um, would be approved would have to be approved by both jurisdictions. There, since the item came, came to the committee with a short period of time, there wasn't really sufficient time to do a little outreach to the neighbors. Uh, but at the meeting, we did, uh, Transportation Committee requested that Sacred Heart start reaching out to the neighbors. Uh, they reached out to that, it's in property across the street.
Across the, Valparaiso, or Michael?
Ronald, yeah. So it's a border on Alena, across from the school.
Oh, wait, I didn't see your name, no, I, okay, sorry.
Um, and so they indicated that they reached out to the trustee, and they didn't have issues. Uh, they also reached out to the other side. Yeah, they, they, they served, they served, or, sorry. We have representatives from the school.
Risky, don't hurt.
The owner of the property. Um, they also reached out on the other side, and the property owners on the Menlo Park side were not asked to. And so if approved, work would be done under an approach permit, basically, we would give a permit to the schools to do the installation. And, uh, again, it would have to be approved by both the City of Menlo Park as well as us. With that, I can, is by the, uh, school.
I have a question, a question. I have a question. Isn't there a, what's it called, a rapid flashy beacon already on Valparaiso?
Further, further towards Elbe.
Correct.
Here, I think it's near the.
So, uh, past the Menlo school, made entry at, at the Sacred Heart.
At Sacred Heart.
Oh, there's one on at Sacred Heart.
You're at Sacred Heart, too.
But there's also one further down.
Hoover, that doesn't work anymore. Hoover doesn't work anymore.
And, and the proposal then is to have a, um, a unit that you put, that somebody would push on either side of the road. It's not having flashers in the road, it's just a sign with flashers on the side. Okay.
My question simply, are, is the paint completely separate from the white, so we can do, we can do the paint without it?
Correct.
Uh, we, we could, and we would have to work with Menlo Park here, it's a shared intersection.
Right, but they're separate, okay.
So, um, there already is a crossing guard down in front of the school, correct?
I believe they had it.
Yeah, there's a crossing guard that stops traffic anytime somebody's even coming close. That person runs out and stops traffic, and so now we're gonna have a crossing guard, and I believe that, as I said, there's also gonna be a crossing guard at this location. So we'll be stopping, within the two streets, we'll be stopping traffic twice potentially. And there's very little, if any, pedestrian traffic going to that school. And, and most of the bike traffic on Valparaiso is going down to Hillview, because it's just going from north, from east to west on, and not really turning in, there's zero turning in, according to the traffic study that we just have done. So I, I don't see really, I, I, I guess, I, I fail to see the, the reasoning for it.
So I think, I think you'll hear through public contact, maybe what was represented at the Transportation Committee was that there's a new construction project being completed near that corner, and they expect that to drive a change in behavior and a change in the number of people coming.
But are there gonna be more kids walking or, or riding bikes?
Well, let's, let's, when we, you know, whenever, so we can ask you.
So, good evening. Hi. So I'm Chairman Hall, Director of Safe Security at Sacred Heart School. I'm the one that presented this idea to the Transportation Commission last week, and I'd like to thank them for putting it forward so quickly to you. Yes, we are completing a, a new building, uh, at the, near the intersection of Alena and Valparaiso. Uh, it will draw the existing population probably closer to that intersection than had been in place previously. The new building is fairly large, and it's the center of the high school. We anticipate, therefore, that more people will be coming onto campus through the gate that's located near the intersection of Alena and Valparaiso. And because of that foot traffic, we, we certainly engage our population to walk. And because of that foot traffic, we, we certainly engage our population to walk and bike and use transportation methods other than cars, carpooling. Um, we anticipate that there'll be more people accessing the campus from the crosswalk that currently exists at the intersection of Alena and Valparaiso. It is our intention therefore to put a crossing guard there, uh, because it's difficult for younger kids to judge the gaps in traffic, and on Valparaiso, there are few gaps. Um, so we feel that it's necessary to add for, to, to their safety. However, in going out and looking at companies that would uh do this for us, uh, none of them were interested in doing it unless there was a traffic control device to add to their safety. It becomes very dangerous for a crossing guard to go out there and do that. And it's for that reason that I'm interested in getting our RFBs at the crosswalk at Alena and Valparaiso. Questions?
My question is just on the funding side, and we talked to the committee, you mentioned my words, you're effectively willing to front the funds.
Yes.
If the funds aren't available, you're willing to pay for them?
It's still our position that we'd like to cost share. Um, we recognize that city government budgets are done in the year in advance, and that we are making a last minute request, and there's likely enough funds in your budget to, to do a cost share or commit to a cost share. We are willing to fund the RRFB study, plan, design, and installation, but we would ask that you would um participate in the, the funding of it, um, when you have money available to do so.
Question. Question. During the time of construction, was there any consideration of the impacts on the surrounding intersections, so on and so forth, that you guys would have considered referring this process to mitigate or put beacons in there at first place? Or is this a consequence of taking out the path?
Well, I, I think it, it may be a little bit of a lack, but we recognize that the existing population will likely be drawn to there. As you mentioned earlier, we do have a crossing guard, and we have RFBs at the, the main intersection of campus, and we do have students that use it extensively. Um, but, you know, I, I arrived there in October, looking at the graphs and the charts, we do have quite a few students living in the neighborhood behind that area, uh, the Robert S. Neighborhood and backed by Hillview School, and I think it's reasonable to assume that they would come on foot and on bike, and why would they go another quarter mile to go all the way down to our main entrance just to loop back to get into that building? So that is the, the reason we want to pursue this now.
So, um, in a, uh, you're aware that in our traffic study, um, Valparaiso, they're recommending a stoplight either at Emily or at Alena, and so, um, those are two very, very dangerous, inconceivable on Valparaiso. And uh, would you, um, would the next step be a stoplight that would be?
So, when I read the study, one of the indicators for a stoplight would be traffic warrants, number of collisions, for example, that have actually happened on Valparaiso. But certainly one of the considerations, I suppose there are other factors that we think, that ultimately, uh, it's certainly in line with the earlier conversation had during your study session, that, that may be something that has to happen on Valparaiso. But right now it's an arterial, the idea is to keep cars moving, a stoplight wouldn't necessarily be consistent with that, that desire. That said, we do have people crossing the streets. That intersection is right on your peninsula lightway pathway, I think RRFBs at that intersection would facilitate bicycles crossing, and uh, I, I mean, I personally have heard quite a few, Alena seems to be a good conduit for bicycle standard students particularly that uh transit that area in the morning.
So, there would be a study first, is that right, that would basically judge um the value of the beacon?
Not necessarily, the design, so how to cut in the mediate paths and where to position the lights and how that they, they get installed and stuff like, we would have that done professionally.
So it would be a, it would be a work on conclusion of to put it in a light, it'd just be a study of technical work, put it in that kind of thing?
Exactly.
So you should probably describe to us what these flashing beacons are, they're, they're, they're not flashing uh hand, this way, placing, they've been flashing to the cars.
Right. So that there are two LED lights that are positioned beneath the crosswalk sign, they're activated with a button, typically they're solar powered, um, they, they work wirelessly, so there's no wire that runs underneath the street. So when somebody comes up and presses the button, um, it, it has an A, a compliant tone, and it makes an announcement saying that the lights are flashing, and that LED light pattern has been demonstrated through, through studies to draw attention to the fact that people are using the crosswalk.
But it doesn't flash to red to the stop?
Nope. It, it, it's an amber flashing red light.
It's a set of lights under a sign, a person crossing is surprised.
That, that's fine, that's fine. Sherman understood what we're talking about.
Sherman, when did it become a requirement for a company that provides, crosswalk providers, I'm assuming it's obviously not Karen's, uh, to provide the beacons in essence?
Well, it's not a requirement to have RFBs, but for example, Menlo School um has a, a contract service for their crossing guards, but they have a traffic signal at the intersection of University and Valparaiso, so that's why that company was willing to do that work there. It is not a requirement, but it's a best practice on busier streets such as Valparaiso that has thirty-five mile an hour um speed limit, to, to have supplements to, to draw attention to, to the, the crosswalk.
It's desirable, but it's not a requirement?
It's true.
Okay, I just, there's a distinction between required and desirable.
Well, for the company that was considering doing business, it was required, but you're right, by law, that's certainly not required.
I was just wondering, because I know, uh, crosswalk.
So, so Sherman, um, again, I just don't necessarily, I, I know you said we're expecting with the new building that there's gonna be a lot more foot traffic, and when other, you know, expansion plans and whatever come from Sacred Heart, um, there was always, you know, traffic mitigation, and there are gonna be people riding bikes, and people walking, and they're gonna give admittance to more Atherton Menlo Park people, and like whether or not the enrollment has changed, I don't know, but, but I just don't see, I see a lot of kids going to Hillview, I just don't see a lot of kids walking or riding to Sacred Heart. And, and, and the study here, although you, you also heard me question whether, uh, it was how valid it was, but the Catholic schools, where our take their vacation started with Friday, this was taken before the Friday, there was very little of any, there was no pedestrian traffic, and there was uh very few bicycle traffic, but most of the bicycle traffic was all going east and west, it wasn't going into the school. So where, where are all these people coming from?
When was the date of the study?
It was last year.
Twenty eighteen, it was a construction site. The, the gate at that corner was dedicated to construction vehicles and trucks, there was no way for a pedestrian, bicycle, they'd have to go further down Alena. So my, my guess, my speculation is that they went down to the main entrance or found another pathway into the school.
So is there going down further to the main crosswalk?
Mm-hmm.
Which is at the front of the school?
Yes.
Um, do you know what the traffic is there? Bicyclists and pedestrians? That was now gonna be distributed?
I couldn't, I couldn't give you the, the exact number, it's frequently used in the morning. Um, we have a, a guard that, that's out there, I, I, I don't have a precise count for you, but twenty, thirty times would not surprise me in the morning, and then conversely in the afternoon during dismissal. Being mindful too, the, this is not high school students, the people that are in the, the probably first or second grade through eighth grade that go off to the eastern side of our campus use that facility as well to transit into campus.
And when, and when is, when is this new building opening up?
October eighteen, October, August sixteenth, sorry.
Yeah.
August, it's beginning to begin soon, and that's why we're moving this forward quickly.
Okay, all right, thank you. Have you talked to Menlo Park as the last question?
We have.
And thanks, I guess, we're gonna make our.
Conference calls with the City of Menlo Park staff, I was involved in one of those conference calls. Um, I, I think they're in favor of it, it, you know, full disclosure, I have done outreach, that was one of the things that I was to report back in tonight, um, Mr. Gaynor who goes across the street is not in favor of it, some for the same reasons that you articulated, and I thought, um, we already have a perfectly good RFB solution down the street, um, that we'd be potentially making our kids cross into an unapproved cross sidewalk situation on Alena, because Atherton doesn't have a sidewalk over there, um, and that they're uncoordinated signals, and I told Mr. Gaynor that if I had an opportunity to speak counsel that I would put his, uh, his, um, objections forward. But that said, um, my intention is that it's all about keeping the kids safe, we have a crosswalk there, whether we choose to remove it and take the stripes out, every intersection has a crosswalk, and people are gonna be crossing there, and it's not just our kids, it's the bicyclists that use the uh, the peninsula lightway path. So it's a heavily used intersection where people have difficulty getting across and judging traffic gaps, and I think the RFBs would um be a suitable enhancement to that, that crosswalk.
Okay. Thank you, Phil.
What's, what's, are we in comment? No, we're not on comments, we're really just asking questions. It sounds like you confirm there's gonna be noise too in these things.
Yes, so part of these are Americans with Disability Act enhancement, there's a beeping noise, they could be quite muted, and we have it in our front entrance, I didn't realize we had it in our front entrance until someone told me to look, it's very faint, but for a blind person, it allows them to know that there's a button to push. And then the uh, the RFBs make a noise, and yellow lights are flashing, and there's options, I think the one at Ensign Almena they put in does it in English and Spanish, it's all how you configure the device to work, but yes, it does for media purposes announce that the lights are flashing so people can get across the street.
Uh, any follow up comments?
I'd like to speak. Thank you, Sherman. I'm Mike Dwyer, Director of Operations for Sacred Heart Schools, and I'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here this evening, and I can address some of the questions that you posed earlier. As far as Atherton residents and the population attending Sacred Heart School, my data is about a year old because our admissions is not completed, however, of the twenty-five to twenty-eight percent of Atherton residents that have school-aged children, we have twenty-eight percent of those students attending our school. We do encourage carpool, we do encourage walking, we do encourage other methods of transportation. We have approximately two hundred students that we bus in from either the train station or other neighborhoods such as Portola Valley and uh Los Altos Hills. We also do Palo Alto and East Palo Alto. We are making efforts whenever anything is brought to our attention to be good neighbors, and we want to be good neighbors. We want to consider every side of the story, and that is why we are so dedicated to keeping our traffic counts down. We now, for the past five years, have had a trending downward slope within our traffic counts, we're at twenty-three percent below the cap, and we continue, that's not acceptable to us, we want to continue to lower that, and we are making efforts to do it yearly. The other comment I'd like to make is, we are committed to the safety of our students. And I always think, what if we had the opportunity and we didn't? Because I don't want to accept if someone were to get hurt at an intersection like that. Our experience is that the cars go very fast on Valparaiso, we have had one employee hit for a number of years now, but he was a crossing guard, he was hit out on Valparaiso, and we've had other near misses. Just last month, there was a vehicle traveling at about six, six-thirty in the morning, the driver fell asleep, three people in the car traversed off the road, hit our main gate, and wedged in between a pillar and the fence. If that had been during the school year, there would definitely have been pedestrians in the area, and if it had been later in the morning, it would have been potentially catastrophic. That's a separate incident, but the, the point is that cars go very fast on that road, and we are concerned about the safety. As far as funding, my commitment is, if we need to do it, we will do it. The other offer I have is that we could employ a temporary beacon and do a study as to whether it's necessary to install a permanent beacon. I'm hoping for questions.
Do you, um, is that close to the Mormon church? And I ask that because my recollection is that in the um, traffic management plan, you guys have students parked at the church?
So we only had students parked at the church during construction, prior to that it was faculty and staff. Um, we will have far less parking at the Mormon church, but we still do use the Mormon church. Those that park at the Mormon church would be going across by the main entrance, because that's closer to Emily.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So, uh, any other public comments? So, we close public comments, um, and we will have final comments, I guess, but there are two things we need to talk about, and we should probably do those separately so we're clear. One is to approve it be done and then do we pay for it? Those are the two items that maybe you need to, right?
Yeah, well, again, approval by you would allow it to theoretically move forward, we haven't done much in terms of public outreach, but Sherman did. Uh, but approval would also require approval by Menlo Park and whatever public process they would have to have.
But, but we'll be able to tell you whether or not we are willing to pay for it.
Yeah, that's true.
Even if they pay for it in the front, would we reimburse them? And I guess the third item would be, you know, if you felt, and tell us if you feel it would be worth anything for them to do this temporary thing, which was just suggested as a, interesting.
Uh, it, it's certainly an interesting proposition, it would at least allow us to gauge whether there's public opposition to having it. The only thing is, is that if they wheeled it out during the day, pulled it back in the evening, or wheeled it out and pulled back, we wouldn't get full, of like, we wouldn't get the full effects of it, people using it at night or on the weekends. It would be a little bit of data, uh, but it would give us a full picture. But it is an interesting proposition.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, my comments are, one, related to the crosswalk, to answer that question, joint with Menlo Park, I think that's something we should discuss with Menlo Park, and I support that. Um, I think that things that have been said.
Related to the striping?
That related to the striping, as far as that's concerned. Um, as far as safety on Valparaiso, I know that we do, and I know Sherman knows this, we spend a lot of resources to do a lot of enforcement on Valparaiso, on purpose, to try to deter those drivers that do those mock speeds, so we definitely understand and we care. Um, as far as the hybrid beacon component is concerned, it's di, it's difficult to, in essence, move forward on the, the beacon component, well, we don't really have knowledge of use, but as we know, historically, we try to, wanna try to channel people, even on ECR, to save the safest locations possible, and in this location, we have multiple locations, which means students are going to every area of the location, which is also a neighboring beacon. But if the school feels that this location is an important location, and they want to invest in this location, I'd be supportive of the school, you know, putting in a beacon to try to train the kids that are just now getting used to a new building and a new location, to that location to increase its safety. I have difficulty doing it without knowledge of that, so, you know, if, if we were to be participants in something like this, I would more so data to determine that in fact there's a volume of kids that are going to be in that location, and maybe that, you know, temporary beacon component would be something, but that's a two-year component to get data and information. So if the school's kind of in a rush to get something in play, I would be supportive of the beacon component financed by the school, um, to try to train the new people in that new building area to go to a location that's safer. And that's just my gut related to whatever.
Um, I'd say the paint, all paint related things, we're doing today. The, with regard to the, the beacon, uh...
The, with regard to the, the beacon, I think it's, it's significant to me that it's pedestrian activated so that if there's not demand, it's not going to be used. I think there's, I'd like to see us, by the way, mixing into your other issues, Bill, I don't, it's not a priority for the town of Atherton, so I don't think we have time for it. The, uh, the, the school's, you know, comfortable with it. I think it's worth exploring the idea of getting temporary one up to see A, is used and B, you know, how it works, how it's used. But it's, it's, I agree with, I think Mike said, Mike Dwyer's comment about student safety. That's a very, very busy street that, you know, there's a lot going on out there and there might be a couple of some kind of device to help protect the pedestrians.
Uh, I'm supportive, I'm, I'm supportive of the flash of the beacon. And doing the striping, obviously it requires approval by Menlo Park, I'm not making that decision alone. If the school wants to do the temporary to judge it and make sure that it, it's worth the expense, then I would support that. I don't think the town should pay for it.
All those men?
All right. So, um, Valparaiso in front of, um, Menlo School and in front of Sacred Heart, uh, the amount of speed that goes down there is intentful. Uh, I think it should all be twenty-five miles an hour and people should be aware that they are in a school zone, not only on Valparaiso, but on Emily and on Elena, because it, it focuses and on heart. It goes all around and people do not comply with the twenty-five mile an hour zone. And I think anything we can do to bring their attention to the fact that there are people trying to cross the street. I see people all the time trying, not just kids, but, you know, little old ladies with a grocery cart, trying to cross the street from the Menlo Park side, uh, across Valparaiso to get onto Emily and walk up the street. And they take their lives in their hands. And that's just from where, um, university where there are stoplights and people have stopped, but then they start accelerating and they go acceleration all the way to Alameda. You know, there's not another road stoplight. So I'm highly in favor of it. I'm not sure that, um, having a temporary, uh, beacon is the right solution. I think that, um, it almost seems like these permanent beacons are rather temporary themselves because you don't have a lot of common wire and I'm very much in support of it anyway. And I actually would like to have one at, uh, at Emily and Valparaiso also. And I don't think that the town should pay for it because this isn't being exacerbated by the growth of Sacred Heart Schools.
All right, so my two cents is, is the following. First off, uh, I think that one of the comments that Sherman made was that kids that are walking towards the east, um, are they gonna walk all the way to the front and, and then walk back if they're going to that building that's on Elena? And I, I agree with the assessment that they will not, they will try and jump the front of cars, so the, the safety is, is an issue and, and I agree with, with that. I'm concerned with, you know, just having stop crossing guards at every location, um, because I, I have been on that road in the morning and no one's speeding because everybody is backed up way beyond Elena, okay? And every time somebody's coming up to the main school and the guard sees them and they might even be fifteen feet down the road, he or she is pushing the button and stopping the cars to allow the kids to just keep their normal cadence in going through. And I think that that is very motivating to the number of people that are trying to get through there. But being as it's said, uh, I am interested in the safety. I think that the comment that they will be willing to look at it is, uh, on a temporary basis, just to make sure that the investment that they will be making in it is something worthwhile, uh, that would be fine. So as such, you know, I think that the town, you know, we should, you know, obviously we can repaint the crosswalk and if we can coordinate with Menlo Park, I don't think that we should be paying for it, um, but we should be enablers for, for school safety. So, uh, and, and just ask the school that they, they work, uh, work hard to make sure that the crossing guards are respectful. I think that the last thing I'd like to point out, and Sherman obviously would know this, but we may recall, we were talking about putting crosswalks in, uh, previous chief that we had, ER Chief Flannan, was, uh, was adamant that if we were going to have a crosswalk on a location, we needed to have some sort of flashing lights or something like that. Just having the shark's teeth on the, on the asphalt and some zebra stripes wasn't enough. And so, you know, so in that remembrance, I think that, you know, we would need to have the, the flashing lights.
Can I talk about the people's scene? Because I don't think there's crosswalks there now. There are.
There's just one.
Just in the front though, just in the front.
Just at that corner.
At that corner. And in the front of the entrance, the front entrance.
Well, the front entrance is for the, yeah.
I know, yeah.
Crosswalk.
Well, that's very dangerous. With the beacon?
Yeah, that beacon, I have a beacon there.
No, in, in the front of the, yeah, in the main entrance.
Yeah.
Yes, but we're talking about at Elena.
So at Elena, there are currently just, the crosswalk is-
Across Valparaiso?
Valparaiso.
Well, that's crazy.
And so what we're talking about is refreshing and determining if you want ladder crosswalk to make it a little bit more-
Yeah. But with the, it's not, yeah, I think that's crazy.
It's a very weak crosswalk, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All the construction traffic.
Yeah, it's just very weak.
I know.
It looks like actually there's lines on both.
All right, Sherman, receive this. Okay, all right. Sherman, receive. Done.
Thank you, Sherman. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, uh, item number twenty.
I got it.
We're done.
Yes.
We're done. Item number twenty. Um, this is, uh, Mr. Connor's, uh, comment on, on an amendment to the city manager's employment agreement.
Mr. Member, council, the council outlines the revisions to city manager's contract that will come out of this session as to what would be permitted. And so I would give this to you as, um, the revisions that get approved will be made to the contract. Okay, I'm already doing it, but wait for it.
Any, there shouldn't be any questions, but are there any questions?
I can think of one.
I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Well, we have to have public comments first, I'm sorry. So no good questions, so any, any public comments? Closing public comments, final comments by the council?
Good.
Any motion?
I'd like to make the approval of the sixth amendment to the city manager's employment agreement. With the sixth amendment to the employment agreement, after seven years of service to the town, the city manager will receive a base salary of two hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars per year and a five hundred fifty dollar term of auto allowance. There have been no other changes to salary and benefits.
Thank you for the detailed approval. Uh, are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
A lot of the way.
Okay, there we have it. Congratulations, George, for another year.
Yours is seven more years. Seven more years.
For another good year. And now we move on to the larger time of-
That's my question. Do I, do I leave or do I stay?
Should I stay?
Yeah. I tried this all night. I'm just getting more of a question.
You could try this all night.
Do I stay or do I go?
Item number twenty-one. Has to do with the city center update.
Another view that Brandon and the-
Team orders.
I can hear anything that will impact your display, so I don't have a problem.
But you gotta go to bathroom.
Unless you need some pee or something.
After this, yeah.
And, and the bathroom, okay, what's going, right?
Great.
Marty?
Good evening, ladies and members, council. This is your monthly update, civic center. And you have two items for you to consider today. The first one is to authorize the city attorney to prepare and the city manager to execute an amendment to the self-insult services agreement with Murray engineers for increased funding due to project delays and hourly rate increases for fee adjustment requested seven thousand two hundred fifty dollars. And then the second one is to authorize the city attorney to prepare and the city manager to execute a lease agreement with both modular or temporary restrooms for the police department and all the back of the information in your staff reports. I have any questions?
Any questions for Marty?
I think we can track them all, the change orders.
Hope so. I have a question. You have a question?
I didn't under, I, I mean, I understand that there's delays and that costs more, but they've got an hourly rate increase when we hired them. And this is, this is an adjustment to a contract we already have, right? This is for Murray engineers.
Right.
Um, don't we have an hourly rate set in that contract when we entered into the contract?
It was, but then since eleven month late, they had hourly rate increases over a while in time.
So we entered into this contract, uh, before-
Well, usually the hourly rate said they adjust every July first, so the hourly rates should-
That's not what it said.
What, what did the original contract say?
I don't have it in front of me, but that's-
Yeah, but, but, but I would suggest you do it this way. If, if the contract was silent on the issue, too bad, so sad, we're stuck with it. If it, if it for some reason had a time constraint on it and ended at a certain time, then they're within their rights to say, could we adjust our rates? You know, but they could certainly do that afterwards with, for-
Good question.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, unless there was a COLA and-
Yeah. You should also have that included, adjusted language.
Let's just check, we'll check.
Okay, any, uh, questions on, on where'd you go?
We might, while we have Marty here. Andrew might want to escape today, the restroom if he wanted, you know, shortage.
Yeah.
It's too bad we didn't, uh, foresee this happening, right?
What, restroom?
The restroom situation.
Well, we're hoping to keep it to a middle of public restrooms.
Yeah.
Construction.
So those aren't there?
Those aren't gone.
Oh, well, they were beautiful.
Well, at least they were functional, but I can see in the demolition that they would go away.
They didn't ever. We didn't know that until about a month or so.
I really think I opened up the wall. All right. I have no questions. Any other questions on number one or number two for Marty?
Tell me.
Any public comments? Okay, closing public comments. Come on back to the council. Any other comments by the council that are to strike?
Let me ask me.
I think we should avoid talking about number one and number two.
I'm ace that number two.
All right.
Ace the number two.
We have a motion, number two. Number one, with, with the proviso, that the contract will be checked for, for a requirement of a COLA or some sort of adjustment clause.
And reviewed by the city attorney. I agree.
All right.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, you're all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good job.
Okay.
Good job, Marty. Good job, good job.
Don't, don't we want to hear what all the other updates on?
Nope. The only one, the only one here was in the staff report.
Is this a new contract or contract that's right here?
It's like school term.
Is it original?
Public comments, any other public comments? Same kind of those public comments. Any-
Questions adjourned?
Reports? Okay, motion adjourned?
Aye.
See you in September.